Well, good morning and welcome to the February 7th meeting of the Kentucky Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Joanne Adams.
Here.
Holly Bloodworth.
Here.
Patrice McCrary.
Here.
Julie Pyle.
Here.
Randy Poe.
Here.
Sharon Robinson.
Here.
Lee Todd.
Here.
Steve Trimble.
Here.
Diane Woods.
Here.
Lou Young.
Here.
Alyssa Riley.
Here.
R.J. Osborne.
Here.
Okay, Chair, you do have a quorum.
Thank you, and thanks to all of those who are joining us virtually. Today's board agenda will be brief in terms of our meeting time, but we have a lot of celebrating to do this afternoon, joining students to recognize the CTE programs. Included on today's agenda is a dedicated public comment segment. This segment is limited to 10 speakers at a maximum of three minutes each. If there are multiple members of an organization, we urge that membership of the membership of that organization to select one person to comment. A sign-up sheet has been provided, and we have one public comment today. Melissa Parrish, please come to the table. Thank you for joining us. Could you speak into the... Yeah.
Is that good? Can you hear me? I had to cut a lot out, and I'm still going to be speed reading because I know there's a limit. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
Okay.
I'm here as a member of the Nelson County community, asking for your support and action to address the irrational decisions at the Nelson County Board of Education members. In Nelson County, board meetings have been packed for a year, as families beg them to listen and beg them for transparency. The amount of emails that have been sent with zero response from four out of five board members is unacceptable. This could be proven through an open records request. The board has cut public comments at meetings; there have been protests and sick-outs, news stations and newspapers covering this nonsense. One longtime board member has resigned citing that he could no longer go along with the unethical and criminal actions of the current board. The board attorney resigned for the same reasons. Just yesterday, the principal of OKH, the middle school that the board haphazardly voted to stick our middle schoolers into, putting it near capacity, resigned as well. We, as parents, were listening, were writing, were attending, were holding town halls and community forums. Thank God we live in a country where we have the freedom to do that. We are doing everything we know to do, but it is not enough. We need your help. All of the uproar is met with the response of no comment and zero transparency from our local board. Members from our community have contacted the Office of Educational Accountability and the Kentucky School Board Association. There appears to be no one interested in helping. Time after time, OEA has told members of our community they will not conduct a formal investigation. I'm aware Mr. Bernie Ayers from Nelson County spoke during the December KBE board meeting as well. Our community is suffering because of the decision-making of our joke of a school board. I have heard the response from state, from the state, that elections have consequences. Some of our current board members ran on false narratives, and since that time, it has become evident to the community that the local board we now have has taken actions for their own personal reasons, regardless of the harm that it does to our students. We have contacted numerous state agencies, asking that something be done to end this negligent behavior. It appears current legislation and policies provide little support to address this issue. However, I recently learned of Senate Bill 169, providing the opportunity for recalls of local Board of Education members. I am asking for your support on this bill to hold local boards of education accountable. Local boards of education have major impacts on the long-term well-being of our communities across the Commonwealth. When people choose to run for their own personal agendas and ignore educators, research, and those that actually work with students, there should be structures in place for local communities to hold them accountable. And an election four years away is too long to wait. This past year has cost families like mine a lot of time, and a lot of money, and a lot of heartache. It is so needless. Boards are supposed to be the voice of their communities. The decisions that have been allowed to be carried out over the past year directly and negatively impacts my own five children. It is asinine that there are great options and compromises, and they just continue to ignore them. While this decision will have lasting impact on all students, the most heartbreaking part of these decisions is knowing that the at-risk students from our most rural communities will be the ones that, who are most detrimentally affected, the ones that public education is supposed to actually fight for. What can you do to help us and them?
Thank you, Ms. Parrish. Commissioner Kennedy, do you have any comment that you want to make?
Thank you for coming, Ms. Parrish. I have talked with your superintendent frequently, and also members of your school board. This is an area that doesn't have clarity in the law right now. As you see, OEA is probably your best place to request an investigation. The Kentucky Department of Education doesn't have authority over board members, and so what we have been trying to do in assisting is encouraging discussions between your local school board and your superintendent, keeping the best interests of your students at the forefront. It has been very disruptive; we understand that. It's been very disruptive to your community, and it is heartbreaking for us to see a community in the place that you are right now. So we appreciate very much you coming, just like we appreciated the other member of your community that came the last time. We continue to encourage, very strongly encourage, that your superintendent and your local school board try to work this out, because what's happening is, there's really, it would be hard to believe that quality instruction is happening in the midst of all this turmoil. So we are here to support the children first and foremost. So we continue to encourage them to try to resolve this in a very meaningful and quick manner.
Thank you so much for coming, Ms. Parrish.
We appreciate it.
The presentation.
Thank you.
Board members, let's move forward with our agenda. The summary minutes for the December 6, 2023 KBE Regular Meeting Day 1, December 7, 2023 KBE Regular Meeting Day 2, December 6, 2023 United We Learn Committee Meeting, December 6, 2023 State Schools Committee Meeting, December 14, 2023 KBE Special Meeting, and February 1, 2024 KBE Awards Committee Meeting, were distributed to you in advance. Are there any corrections to these minutes? If not, I would like, I would ask a motion for their approval in a second.
So move.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you so much. The minutes are approved. The next item on our agenda concerns the recipient of the 2024 Robinson Award for Diversity and Equity in Public Education. I'll call on committee, Awards Committee Chair, Patrice McCrary, please to make the report.
Thank you, Chair Robinson. Of course, it's always my pleasure to share this, the exciting news of our next recipient for an award that we will recognize, from the best committee on the planet. We get to see, over and over and over and over, the applications that come through that just, we could just sing their praises for what's going on across the Commonwealth, the good that's happening. Dr. Samuel Robinson was a former member of the Kentucky Board of Education from 1991 to 2004. He made, he made diversity and equity in public education his life's work. A noted educator and civil rights leader, Robinson began his career in Kentucky, in Louisville, in 1960. His diverse background in public education included everything from being principal at Shawnee High School to president of the Lincoln Foundation. Robinson was also a well-known community figure as Louisville navigated the civil rights era. Each year, the Kentucky Board of Education grants this award to a Kentuckian or a Kentucky organization demonstrating extraordinary efforts and contributions in the area of educational diversity and equity. The criteria for receiving this award includes, but is not limited to, successful efforts in closing socio-economic and/or racial achievement gaps, and significantly improving student learning, student achievement, or other measured outcomes among students of color or economically disadvantaged students. On behalf of the Awards Committee, I would like to share that the committee met on Thursday, February 1, and determined that candidate number 10 best met, best met the criteria of the award, and we had several in contention. It was amazing. Therefore, I would like to move approval of candidate 10 as the recipient of the 2024 Robinson Award for Diversity and Equity in Public Education, and ask the chair for the board's approval to recognize candidate number 10 at the board's upcoming April Regular Meeting.
Thank you so much. It's a report from the committee, so the motion doesn't require a second. Is there any discussion desired? Then I'll call for a vote to approve the committee's recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes, and we can't wait to meet this person. We love these moments of celebration, and I want to thank the Awards Committee for the, for their very, very close and really judicious work, since our awards are really competitive.
Yes.
So that's, that's good to know as well. The next item on the agenda is an update regarding the commissioner's search. I'm pleased to offer this update. As you know, the application process will close on February 16. As in all searches, we typically see a majority of the qualified applicants appear very close to the days preceding the closing of the application process. We've had a number of, the search firm reports that they've had a number of very productive conversations with potential candidates, and they anticipate that this will be the case for us. We will see many more applicants. As of today, there are five completed applications. K-12 Insights continues to collect stakeholder feedback, and will do so until February 16. They have currently gathered feedback from the General Assembly. There have been 15 responses, educators and administrators, 198 responses, stakeholders, 172 responses. Also noted on the commissioner's search website, the interview committee will meet in March, and the finalist interviews are scheduled for March 18 and 19. Now, once our surveys close, Insight will issue a report that will be made available to us, and this should be very useful information as we prepare for the March interview process and the finalist interviews. So we are nearing the, what, the starting gate, if you will, considering applications. We would invite your continued vigilance and engagement, encouraging folks to participate in the surveys that are available, and to provide information regarding the priorities for selecting a qualified commissioner, and one ready to take up the important work that is underway here at the Kentucky Department of Education. So, any questions or comments regarding the searches? Everybody talking about it?
Yes. It's a buzz.
Yes, no pressure. No pressure.
Well, I do want to just commend the staff here at the department for continuing their work, continuing a pace. And anytime you have a transition, you have ambiguity, you have anxiety, and the opportunity for mischief abounds. I really have been encouraged and gratified, and it is as we expected that the KDE would show its focus, its professionalism, its expertise, its competence, and its dedication to service. So that's what we want to encourage the staff here, to continue being you and do what you do, because it is noted, appreciated, and we are looking for a commissioner that can support your further efforts in this regard.
Chair Robinson?
Yes.
I might just ask, Meredith, I don't know if you have, what your conversations with Steve were like, but did they have any heartburn about five completed applicants with nine days to go?
No, he continues to repeat that they received the majority of their applications in the days directly preceding the closure. So I think that they're optimistic, and he has indicated that the firm has talked to a lot of interested applicants who have not submitted, and they have put out applications on a variety of search websites, and so they certainly are doing their best to recruit a dis...
That's helpful. I was trying to think back, you know, it's been four years, but back, I don't think we knew, we had a lot more applicants than that, than this, but I don't think we knew that until after it had closed. So I don't think we had a benchmark at this point, so.
We did not.
Okay.
But there is, thank you for raising that, just for clarification. It is, we want a rich candidate.
Right. Right.
So, per board policy, the agenda for each regular meeting shall include an item under which board members may raise issues, not included on the agenda for the purpose of clarification, referral to a committee, or scheduling for future board review, and our action, if there is a consensus of the board. So we would now open the floor for board sharing. Please.
Yes.
Vice Chair Young, I would like you to start.
Yes, thank you so much. I don't think I could have gotten a goofier picture at the White House.
Oh, you could.
Oh, yes, we could. Yes, we could. Really good point. So I do have a couple things to share. First, I was laughing that Meredith called this, Dr. Young goes to Washington. It felt a lot like that. I'd never been to the White House before, certainly never been invited to the White House before, and didn't go surreptitiously either. But it was, I had the opportunity to serve on the National Education Technology Plan. And so, Lee, they recounted at this event, at the launch on January 22, that when they called me to confirm, the Assistant Deputy Secretary of Education, Roberto Rodriguez, had asked me to serve through some connections that I had, and I said, "I am happy to do that. I'm fascinated by it, but I'm not a tech person." And so their response was, "That's why we need you." And so I really appreciated the fact that, I think I checked some boxes, former superintendent, state board of ed, university faculty, that kind of thing. But it was really a great experience. As you might imagine, in the federal government, no offense, it took about 18 months of work to put together what we thought was going to be a six-to-10-month stint, but I'm really pleased with it. I'm happy to forward, to ask Meredith to forward it to you all. So the plan was launched this day, and we had several members of Secretary Cardona's executive team there to talk about the importance of the plan. I also want to thank Alyssa's dad and Marty Park. Dave Couch and Marty Park were kind of my ride or die. Marty, especially, there were times I was like, "Oh, what they're talking about?" And so he would back me up with some data and some information, so that I could be a good contributor. What I'm most excited about, if you get a chance to take a look at the plan, is that in one of our technical working group conversations, I said, "You know, it would be so great if we could align this with that work that's happening nationally around a portrait of a learner." Well, they ran with it, and Portrait of a Learner is stamped throughout the whole plan, looking at ways to ensure that our students are developing those kinds of skills with integrated technology. It's not the technology, we know that, right? David has been preaching that for 35 years. It's not the technology, it's the way we integrate technology for learning, and use it in such a way to personalize the experience of learners, to develop the Portrait of a Learner skill set. So it connects several dots at the national level, and so I'm really excited about the work, and came out of it a little bit more technologically savvy in the process. And we even devote some time and attention to virtual reality, to artificial intelligence, and really trying to peep around the corner to see what is going to be impacting our school and technology integration in the future. So it was a real, it was a lovely opportunity for me. I learned a lot, and I was really happy to be participating in that regard. So the other piece of sharing I wanted to add, I've really enjoyed my time, several of you have too, with the National Association of State Boards of Education. So I haven't even had a chance to tell you this, I was asked to chair the PEP Committee, Policy Something Committee. I will get that straight before the first meeting. I just, when Dr. Robinson became chair, she rotated off the PEP Committee representing Kentucky and asked me if I would sit in that seat, and so I was able to participate all last fall in their work. And they, the purpose of the committee is to look at national policy language that kind of transcends any individual state, but how NASB can advocate for and inform federal policy around the work of state boards of education. And so the committee does a lot of white paper kind of work, policy language dissemination, lots of wordsmithing around the language to make sure that we are accurately reflecting what the members from other states are saying. But I'll be starting as chair in that, on that committee in April, and really looking forward to that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your continued service through NASB, and we will have other opportunities for other members of the board to contribute and participate in NASB, so stay tuned, get ready, and, because it's really interesting work, and I appreciate it.
I always find them to be so professional, very neutral politically, with just an open bipartisan approach to all of the work. And every meeting, or conference, or NASB event that I've ever been a part of has been really high-quality, and our own Julie serves on the executive board now, representing new members in, on state boards of education. So I'm really glad that, and Todd's super active on the ABC side of legal support for state boards of education, so little NASB commercial.
Please. Patrice.
Yes, thank you, Chair Robinson. I would like to just give a really quick report from the WEF committee meeting that we had earlier this week. Subcommittee, Whole Child Committee, Jim Tackett is the chair of that group, and every time is such an uplifting opportunity to be involved. Holly is also on that committee, representing the board as well, and wraparound services for our children across the Commonwealth just takes my breath away, over and over every time I have the opportunity to hear all of these very influential, important people across the Commonwealth who are involved with our children. So just a couple of things that I want to point out from the meeting that just kind of showed me what's really going on across the way, two things I want to share. One of them is we had, Angie McDonald did a report concerning the data of reported students in the health offices across the Commonwealth, and what an impact our nurses are making, our school nurses are making. There were 2,800, wait, is that right? 2,800, that can't be, anyway, a whole bunch of school nurse visits.
I saw the name of my committee, too.
It looks like it's written, 2,813,789 school visits.
Oh, it could be.
Did, what, did I write that down right? It's online, I'll need to look it up.
That is very possible.
And, and which is accurate, because 173,567 of those students were sent home. So that's going to be how many visits there were. I'm still overwhelmed when I look at it, and it is a 2 million, over 2 million mark, almost 30. As our nurses are busy, 93.84% of our students were able to return to the classroom and did not miss out on instruction, because we had those individuals in our schools to have a look at them, take care of them, and that's big, that's big. We have 117,904 chronic medical conditions in our schools across the Commonwealth. Broken down, some of those are 38,000 with asthma, ADHD, 34,000, food allergies, 21,450. We have over 4,000 students with EpiPens. So that all said and done, helps us understand the importance of having those school nurses, critical, critical members of our schools, and so that funding is so, so important. And just a little fun aside, to mention to all of the board members, National School Breakfast Week is March 4 through 8, if you want to zip by a school and enjoy some yummy breakfast in some of your local schools, so.
Pancakes on a stick.
Do what? Pancakes on a stick. Pancakes on a stick, and then stop by the school office to thank the school nurse. So it's a very informative committee, and I feel like I need to share. Anything else?
That's, that's what I would have shared.
Yes, Holly.
Well, tomorrow, we're, we will be celebrating 103 newly certified NBCTs.
Nice.
And 253 renewals. So they'll be recognized in the legislature, and then have a pinning and award ceremony tomorrow. So I hope we can hear maybe from, you know, about, more about that program, but Jocelyn Wall has been working on that, along with the Kentucky National Board Network, so we're excited for that tomorrow.
Oh, how lovely.
To celebrate that hard work.
Absolutely. It's amazing. And our Kentucky contingent of board-certified teachers is quite impressive. I mean, what do we have to, 300?
I don't even know, like, we're number...
Top, top two, three, four.
Four, something else in the nation, yeah.
Oh, that is so amazing. Thank you for sharing that wonderful sharing. Any, please, oh, yes, Julie.
So to tag along with Lou on the NASB, so we had a board meeting last week, I believe.
My committee is the Public Education Policy Committee.
You rectified yourself.
Yes.
So we're looking at revamping the New Member Institute, to build in some additional capacities and give feedback from new board members, what they would like to see in that New Member Institute. The other fun thing I did was, last week, I was a judge for a chili cook-off at Jones Middle School. The winning chili was a delicious white chicken chili, but the other fun part of that is Jones Middle School, if you haven't heard, a group of 30 current and former educators from there won a million dollars in the lottery. And so the excitement at that school is just so much fun. There's the media there constantly, they've been on Good Morning America, they've been on a number of different TV stations. So the buzz at this school, which really deserved it, was a lot of fun to be around.
Julie, you're out there in schools. You've been to a school celebration as they were, they were receiving an award, is that right?
That was snowed out.
Yes, that was snowed out. That's rescheduled from March 1st, I think.
Ah, Special Olympics.
Yes. That's March 1st.
It's really hard to keep up with you guys, but I love seeing these activities, and anyone else? I know you've all been busy.
I'd like to share, I had the privilege of being at Robert B. Turner Elementary School in Lawrenceburg last week. The excitement, they are a PBIS school, they have their PBIS mantra up in the hallways, and in the classrooms, they do champs. So that was very interesting to see them. It was math testing that day, and I was sitting in the office talking with the principal, and one of the, the secretary said, "Oh, I need, I'm sorry, but I need to interrupt you, blank, blank, whatever the child's name wants to see you." And this little girl comes in, and she says, she just hands him her papers showing her math scores. And he was, you know, he gave her a big fist bump, and it was just exciting to see the excitement in, in that particular school. The SRO is amazing. They know the officer, they know him by name, and his, when we were talking with him, he said, you know, "My good day is when I make..." I'm making sure everyone is safe and I want to see a smile on every student's face. So there's so many services. They have a Health Kids Clinic there with a LPN that is on call, that's open. The nurse, the counselor is putting in her amount of time as far as counseling instead of just guidance. So it just shows you what can happen when everything works together. The bus drivers, it was one of the first schools I'd ever been in, there were no really problems on the bus. We think, we get on the bus and we love our driver and we make the trip and everything's fine. So I just wanted to share that. It was just exciting being, being there and just, it was like, I wanted to go back. I thought, can I get a job here?
Well, those, those activities help to reinforce our resolve and inspire us to keep doing what we're doing because there is so much good going on out there in the state regarding our students. And we have, we have really high aspirations for doing more and serving them ever better. Anyone else?
Oh, can I share? So this week is National School Counselors Week and I think Robyn put something on our social media, but I know the role of guidance counselors encompasses a lot these days. So thank you to our outstanding guidance counselors across the Commonwealth that are really dedicated to our students and are so helpful to our educators. And then I believe it's frisky too. I think it starts today actually and runs through the 11th. So Patrice talked about those wraparound services and I know when I was in the classroom teaching little ones, thank you to our friskies because our family resource centers are so helpful to our students and to our families. They do so much. So shout out to both groups of those people in our state.
Great, great.
That makes me think of Patrice's connection there. Those 2 million touches were going to happen somewhere. And if it's not happened by a trained professional, health professional, it's going to be the teacher or the bus driver, or more likely the secretary at the school trying to double up, passing out meds, hitting a kid with an EpiPen, et cetera. So I just think we have to remember that this is, when we think about the importance of wraparound services to the instructional corps. It keeps teachers, from Melissa, from having to do all of those things that the child needs in the moment because we have support staff on hand who are much more qualified to do that work.
And it, I think it also illustrates the reality and the accuracy of the school community being a complex enterprise that's going on to support these students in learning. And it's not the teacher at the front of the classroom.
It's ecosystem, yeah.
It's, it is an ecosystem that involves the wraparound services and the various dimensions of disciplines that impact learning. And if it's not there, you're going to have a missing piece, a missing link, and a vulnerability of a student regarding their achievement. And we don't want those vulnerabilities to exist. Randy, we could go on on this topic, so I'm watching the clock.
Chair Robinson, I call, I call those groups doing all of that our bubble wrap groups because it's the closest thing we have to wrapping our students in bubble wrap to protect them.
Mine's not as much sharing, but it goes along with you just said there. And I didn't see Mr. Perry on our update, so that's why I'm bringing this up now, or I would have just waited until then. I guess the legislature this week just passed again to look at studying the SEEK formula. And my concern there is, is we've studied this so many times, KBE studied it, KDE studied it, OEA studied it, the Council for Better Education studied it. Two years ago, we had a funding task force on it. I guess my question is, and hopefully that we tell them that we move, need to move past the study and do some action. We've got all the action components from all these things. And going along with you said, we've had so many great things that our teachers are doing, but without adequate pay, without adequate pay, we're losing them and this budget did not do that. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I had another conversation with Mike Stacey yesterday who came to us at the board. You know, with the 31% property assessment increase, the formula was never done for that. So I guess what I'm hoping is, as a board, that, and with Mr. Perry's help, that we're continuing to push that the time for studies are over, it's time for action. They need to make action up there. And, and, and I think that's, I don't know what we can do in relationship, you know, I heard the governor the other day, you know, calling for 11% increase. And I, I liked his words that he said, you know, we haven't fixed SEEK in 20 some years and it'll probably be 20 years before we fix it, so we need to do something now about it. And I think that's where we need to be pushing the same thing is, we need to do something about SEEK and not just study, study, study. I participated when Jean Will Hoyt did the first study with the leader, Wuschner pushing it, the KDE did. We identified anomalies 20 some plus years ago and we just haven't fixed them. So I guess I would like to see our recommendations as a board, at least to them, even if they don't do anything, to say what we think needs to be done with the SEEK formula because we've got the studies, we've got the background. So my just thoughts there.
Do you want to comment?
No, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out for Brian Perry. Whatever we need to do as KDE to continue to push that message that it's time for past studies and time for action, whatever our recommendations were.
So let's round back to that.
Because we did it just two years ago.
Yeah, we did it two years ago.
Right, exactly.
And the department was very much involved in that task force that happened in the summer of 2021, I believe.
Yes.
We had a seat at the table, really good discussions, recommendations were made by that task force to the General Assembly. They are in writing and it really didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, I just like us to put back in writing what we recommended. So if they're going to do another study, at least we can say.
Maybe start there. Maybe start there.
Yeah, because we got, we got school districts, we got over 60 school districts now that are about 60% funded locally. And that's just a crime.
That's really, so let's round back to this topic when we get to the update with, with Brian and.
But I don't see him on here, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no update on our agenda, that's why I brought it up.
Okay, okay, all right.
There is an update? Oh, okay, I didn't see it on the agenda, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we will, we will get back to this topic.
I looked over the agenda and didn't see him as an update here, so that's why I brought it up.
It's with the budget presentation.
Nothing wrong with bringing it up over and over again.
I must have a different agenda here because my agenda doesn't have all that other stuff on.
Well, and it's also the case that funding is never off the agenda. It is kind of like, it's ubiquitous, it's always with us and we'll take every occasion to address it and see if we can improve upon it. I am.
I just had one thing real quick.
Well, let's, let me do this. I'm going to give us five minutes on this issue now and then we'll, we'll get on with the good news and, and continue a pace. So let's see what we can do in five minutes.
Well, I just wanted to point out that Chair Tipton, when the, when the resolution was passed out of the committee, Chair Tipton mentioned the study two years ago, mentioned that he was one of the co-chairs and that he was going to share all that material with the bill sponsor. So I just wanted to make sure you all were aware that they recognize that that's, that had, just had, have just done this two years ago. And so all that information is being shared, but we can definitely put together an email as Dr. Poe mentioned and share that as well, so.
So Dr. Poe, do you have something more concrete and specific in mind that you would have us do? We certainly, you know, want to hear your direction.
No, I just think that when I sit there and listen, and I listened, that they're, they're forgetting about all the studies that were done. And it's like they're starting from scratch again. And if we start from scratch, we're never getting anything done. You know, and Ogden and Picas, the original authors of the study even commented that, you know, it's about adequate funding. There's been a study done in 2014 on adequate funding. And, you know, I heard, also heard the House Speaker say, we haven't given them a number. And that's what I've asked for before. What, what number, if, if, if the governor is saying 11% increase in salary, what number do we have to say needs to be in the SEEK formula to accomplish that? Nobody's answering that question. And that's what, but they keep throwing that out, that we don't give them a number, we don't give them a number. Well, somebody needs to give them a number, that's all I'm saying. Or otherwise, we're never going to get there. What is that number? You know, we don't know. Or nobody's saying it, if we do know what that number, what the SEEK guaranteed base should be to accomplish 11% increase, as the governor pointed out. And then when he was running against Cameron, they said 5%. So what is that number from SEEK that would get us an 11%?
So I think, two questions there. The 11%, we can run a number and come up with what that represents to give 11% increase. You know, it gets a little more complicated when you're running it through the formula because when you put that number into the formula, then it doesn't.
Equalization happens.
Yeah, equalization happens and it doesn't flow that way. The number that is very difficult to reach is what is adequate? What is adequate? 11% is just one piece of adequacy, if, or whatever that percentage is for salary, that's just one piece. So what is adequate to run our school districts in a way that we can provide vibrant learning experiences for our students, that we can have our communities involved, that we assess appropriately? That's a different number. And, and that's the hard one to get your arms around because for every school, every community, every district, it's a different amount.
Right, but that was done in 2014 by district and with inflationary numbers that need to be added. But we're, I, I guess that's what I'm saying, another study is just going to put us back to 2014 and where are we now? We, we did that with, you know, what, what a model school be in 2014? But I just don't hear any talk about that from, whether it's from us, whether it's from the legislature, on that adequate piece that you're, I, I understand the complex of the formula, fought it for years. And we've, you know, and we've just never done anything with it. And I just see another study that they're doing. I'll be quiet. It's, you know, it's, it's, we just, we need to push them to do more than just study.
Yeah. So Commissioner Kenny, I am going to ask that we consider for the April agenda, a session with the board on this funding issue and how we can be better informed and more influential advocates for the right kind of fixes. We are in a situation in our Commonwealth, fortunately, where there is some, there is some money.
There is money.
And I think as good stewards, we should take seriously the opportunity to inform ourselves, to inform our advocacy for proper use of that money on behalf of our kids.
We can absolutely do that. We can share information on the current status of our funding, what it looks like and where, where sort of our pain points are across, whether it's salary, whether it's certain student populations, we can share that. And, and we do share that regularly with legislators. So we'll be happy to do that for presentation.
Chair. That would be really appreciated. And Holly, and there's.
I was just going to say, would there be an opportunity for maybe an educational session for those of us that maybe weren't in a superintendent seat or somewhere where that whole funding model?
We have, we have done that and, and I think that's a great idea, Holly. We have done that in previous retreats with the board to talk about, you'll get to see my, my flowchart of where all the money comes in and where it comes from and where it goes. I think that's a really good sort of setting the stage for understanding of what we think needs more support or isn't working so well. So we can certainly do that, however the Chair desires, whether we do that as a separate session or as a part of a presentation in the board meeting, we're happy to do that.
Well, let us put our heads together and organize this in a way that really gets us ready for a very explicit assertion regarding improved funding. Patrice, you had a comment?
I would also love to know the school districts that are dealing with the 60% weight of carrying this, the communities that are carrying it rather than the state input. Because I hear a lot of times about how states putting so much into education, but a 60-40 is not a very equitable situation. I'd like to see where those hotspots are. Thank you.
We have so much good news to share and I do not want us to miss an opportunity to give this the time it deserves on our agenda. Our good news includes 19 districts that received funding to transform a bus into an early learning classroom. Diane, would you please tell us about that good news?
Yes, yes ma'am, glad to. I'm very appreciative of the opportunity to share this because it took me back to a visit I made to Jessman County Early Learning Village, stepping into the future. And the first things that they talked about was all the education that went on once the student got on the bus before they even darkened the doors of the school building. So this is very exciting. 19 school districts have received funding to transform a bus, a bus, into an early learning classroom. As part of the American Rescue early, as part of the American Rescue Plan, early learning funding, the Office of Special Education and Early Learning piloted an early learning bus grant initiative in Martin County, go Martin County. Last fall, OSEL introduced an early learning bus competitive grant opportunity specifically designed to support after-school and summer programming for preschool age students. Look at that continuum. In December, 18 districts, 18, were identified for grant awards. The districts benefited, benefiting from the bus grants emphasized their commitment not only to delivering high-quality evidence-based learning opportunities on the bus, but also to utilizing the early learning buses for broader community initiatives. These include raising awareness of the importance of early learning in their communities, enhancing community partnerships and outreach, and providing family and caregiver training and resources. Representatives from districts receiving this grant expressed excitement about the opportunities it will provide to serve children and families. The Martin County Early Learning Bus began offering learning opportunities in the community in January. Thank you, Martin County.
Ah.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And next we have Julie is going to tell us about the Radon Poster and Video Contest.
The Kentucky Department of Public Health has announced the winners of the 2023 Radon Poster and Video Contest. And I just want to point out, if you look, it builds into a lot of our portrait of learner characteristics. So I, I love this with creativity and communication skills and things. So the poster contest winners, first place, Radon Can Cause Lung Cancer, made by Grayson, who is 12, from the School for the Creative and Performing Arts in Fayette County. Second place poster, Radon Protect Yourself by Quanol, 11, School for the Creative and Performing Arts in Fayette County. Third place, In Your Home by Benjamin, who's 14, from Ramsey Middle School in Jefferson County. And then on the video contest, first place, Breaking News Radon Gas by Ella, who's 17, from Grace Christian Academy in Davis County. Second place, The Invisible Killer by Catalina, who's 15, from North Oldham High School in Oldham County. And third place, Radon, The Ghost in Your Home by Lauren, 15, North Oldham High School in Oldham County. The Kentucky Radon Program sponsored the contest to raise awareness about the potential dangers of radon and the importance of testing one's home. The program works in partnership with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to provide education and bring awareness to the health hazards caused by radon to the residents of Kentucky. Radon is a gas with life-threatening, serious effects on humans and is a leading cause of lung cancer in non-smokers. Congratulations to all the winners.
Ah. It'd be great to see some of those posters here sometime, if we can do that. Our next good news item concerns the 2024 U.S. Senate Youth Program. Randy?
Yes, it's a privilege to talk about these great students as we were talking about great teachers just before, just doing amazing work. Ariel Fader, a senior at Rao High School in Boone County, and Meyer Hall Nazir, a senior at Kentucky Country Day School, a private school in Jefferson County, were selected from among the state's top student leaders to be part of the National 104 Student Delegation of the United States Senate Youth Program. Fader and Nazir also will each receive 10th, a 10th. Fader and Nazir also will each receive a $10,000 college scholarship for undergraduate study from the Hearst Foundation. Fader and Nazir have records of strong leadership, academic achievement, and commitment to service. Fader is the 2023 National Technology Student Association Treasurer, a national competitor and captain of her school's speech and debate team. Founder, she founded the Speak Out Campaign, a national student-run organization dedicated to making public speaking education accessible and improving civic engagement among youth. Her accomplishments include being named a Coolidge Scholarship Senator Bill of Rights Institute National Fellow and Millen Girls Moonshot Flight Crew Member. She was accepted to both the Governor's School for the Arts in two disciplines and the Governor's School for Entrepreneurs. Fader plans to pursue a college degree in computer science and attend law school.
Where's she from, Randy?
And she is from Rao High School in Boone County.
Oh.
Very proud place, a great learning institute up north. Nazir spent time between her grandparents' home in Pakistan in Kentucky, which she said catalyzed her mission for humanitarian causes and social activism through an equity lens. I can't imagine what these kids are doing in high school, I mean, compared to what we do, at least me, anyway. She learned about the history of inequality in her city and current measures to combat the legacy through her work with the Louisville Youth Philanthropic Council and the Muhammad Ali Center Council of Students. She is research lead with the Kentucky Student Voice Team on a project that seeks to amplify, amplify, and elevate student experiences and responses to diversity, equity, and inclusion in schools. Nazir was selected, elected Honor Council President at her school, which includes overseeing consequences for honor code violation. She is also her school's Student Council President and a four-year varsity volleyball team member. The students will represent Kentucky during the 67th Annual Student Week in Washington, D.C., to be held March 2nd through 9th. In addition, Molly Kate Webb, a senior at Barron County High School, a great school, central, down central Kentucky, and our other one from Jefferson, don't want to forget the mid-state here. So we got north, middle, and a little bit south. Barron County High School and Ollin Graham Cody, a senior at McCracken County High School. There you go. And now we got the western. I mean, we got, got to get eastern represented here in the future, were chosen as alternatives to the 2024 program and may be asked to serve in a primary delegate if a primary delegate is unable to participate. So let's give them a great round of applause. All the great ones. It's amazing when you, you know, just like our teachers, when you read those and see those things, it's just amazing.
Excellent.
Well, my story comes from Midway, Kentucky, and Woodford County Schools. The elementary school in Midway is Northside Elementary and everything, like Julie said, everything in this report today is just delicious. It's got United We Learn stamped all over it. If we remember our three legs of the stool are vibrant learning experiences with deep community engagement and a new way to think about, innovative way to think about assessment and accountability. So in this project, students at Northern, excuse me, Northside Elementary School in Woodford are learning all these new skill sets that are aligned to the Woodford County Portrait of a Learner and our state Portrait of a Learner. The project is called Saddle Up Midway and it's part of the district's effort to incorporate the Portrait of a Learner skills into regular classroom instruction. But it's got a dollop of PBL, project-based learning, and experiential learning, and outside school walls learning, and opening up the community and the school walls. So the initiative began when school officials reached out to the city of Midway for their help to create a problem, a real-world problem that students could grapple with, creating an opportunity for students to turn their classroom instructional learning into hands-on, portrait-aligned learning that emphasized the aspects of the state's and local Portrait of a Learner. So they got help from the mayor in Midway, Mayor Stacy Thurmond, and were able to develop a project for the students from Northside to help the mayor and city council members. So we often talk about an authentic audience. So the mayor and the city council needed their help. And the project required students to conduct research, to talk to community members, to visit areas all around Midway, and put together a video as their deliverable. Each grade level, of course, has a different curricula, so the, it was a school-wide effort to look at how they could articulate this work around the city of Midway throughout their curriculum there at Northside. So the idea is that every grade would then build on itself and the project would have some sustainability. It sounds to me like what they're actually doing is engaging out in the community and looking for ways that everybody in the community can fall in love with the beautiful place where they live. If you haven't driven that scenic route from Lexington to Versailles via Midway, you got to do it, you just got to do it. So the focus is on, it's, there's a quote in here, "The problem that students ended up taking on was finding ways to remind Midway citizens of the beauty within their own city." The goal was to create a partnership with the community while allowing the students to engage in hands-on and performance-based experiences. So that could apply everywhere. It could apply to your burg in Jefferson County, east-west, north-south, central, all of those. We can help our students, the whole world inside their, their community is a microcosm of the whole world, and those opportunities for kids to experience that, to me, is just really, really a delightful way to think about vibrant learning. So congratulations to Northside Elementary for Saddle Up Midway.
Wow. Talk about students learning what civic engagement means.
Right.
Is, I mean, that's beautiful, beautiful. Thank you so much.
So many levels.
For today, our capstone report is from Ms. McQuary on students featured in People Magazine.
I'm telling you, fellow board members, put your seat belts on because this spotlight is going to make your heart sing. Four 12-year-old girls from Bondurant Middle School in the Franklin County School District have found that kindness has a ripple effect. Friends Emma Collinsworth, Eleanor Bishop, Avery Bishop, and Campbell Goins, with the help of their guidance counselor, started something called the Kind Line. And the Kind Line is a hotline where students can call and hear an uplifting quote, a joke, a friendly voice telling them just simply to have an awesome day. So I hope it's 1-800 number, so we can all do that because don't we need those on a regular basis? The idea was actually formed after the friends noticed that some students in their school were looking lonely and they were sitting by themselves and they were not connecting with other students. What observant individuals at a middle school level. The Kind Line inspired other students to spread kindness. For example, one student started a peer tutoring program. The four kind friends in their story were featured in People Magazine last fall. And in another act of kindness, two siblings, Ryland and Reagan Richens, shared their own kind mission in their hometown of La Grange. Their mission was to make their community a better place and raise money for local charities, and their plan was to sell hand-painted Be Kind signs. Now, these two girls attend the Oldham County, are in the Oldham County School District, and they have a sister with special needs and, and another special needs sister who passed away. And Ryland and Reagan felt that people sometimes were not as nice to their sisters as they would like for them to have been. So the sisters began making these Be Kind signs using spray paint and wooden block letters, and they were sold for $10 apiece. Now, their goal was to sell 65 of these signs. They have sold more than 5,000.
Wow.
And they donated, oh, chill bumps, they donated the proceeds to the Humane Society, Food Pantries, and other organizations. I think these girls need to go on Shark Tank. Because of their efforts, the mayor and the city council decided to make the city of La Grange the Kentucky's kindness capital. The school district placed a Be Kind sign at every school, and their story was featured in People Magazine and in an episode of HGTV's Hometown Kickstart, and they appeared on the Today Show, and they've been featured in publications like The Courier-Journal, The Cincinnati Inquirer, and The Oldham Era.
And celebrated here. Thank you so much. So let's consider all this good news our store of riches today as we move into our reports. And our first report is going to come from Dr. Thompson from the Council of Post-Secondary Education. Dr. Thompson, welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning.
Board, good to see everybody. It, you know, it's busy. That's my first statement. It's a lot of stuff going on, especially with the legislature engaged with us. And I know you folk are in the same position. Today, here in a few minutes, I have a, my monthly president's meeting where we'll discuss a variety of things. One of the things we will discuss, and I'll start the meeting off with this, you know, how can we better be out there working with you on getting more of these young people to get into college? And how do we use our dual credit and other items to make that happen? With that in mind, I think I gave you a hint last meeting with our report that it came out with the National Student Clearhouse data that Kentucky was number one in the nation in enrollment gains. We're proud of that, obviously. And the way National Student Clearhouse, the way they do their work, as you know, they take a sampling after they add drop dates of our universities and colleges. And I, as I tell people, it's apples to apples. They do the same with all states. So it's a really valid way of doing a first look at enrollment. The way we collect enrollment in Kentucky is that we collected after return the Title of Four, which we get enrollment on November 1. So there's a few people that will have left by then, obviously, but I'm proud to say in either case, Kentucky is leading in enrollment and we're, that's a good one. The governor, myself, and others had a news conference around this. Now, once again, it's a little bit of a tale of two cities here. One good tale to tell is that we've done really well on our student success piece inside of higher ed. We, our graduation rates are up, our retention rates are up, and we're, more people are graduating to a point where now our latest data show that we are at 55% attainment rate, which means that 55% of Kentuckians have a post-secondary credential that matters. We say that matters in quotation because we measure if you can't make $32,000 sustainable dollars with that post-secondary credential, we don't really count it. So in that regard, you know, we've, we're 55% toward or 60% attainment, and that's something a little bit to brag about with the economy, you know, going as well as it is, we know that we're going to have to get more people ready for that. You know, the bad side of it is that we've got to get more Kentuckians, especially from my neck of the woods, eastern Kentucky. We've got to get more of these folks engaged in the pipeline to get a post-secondary credential that matters. And so we're working really hard and want to continue working with our K-12, P-12 counterparts to make sure that we are doing everything we can to make it easier for a young person to get that post-secondary credential and get out. You probably know this already, it's predicted that at least 62% of Kentuckians will need a post-secondary degree of some sort by 2030. Now, if you look at the jobs that are going to require post-secondary credentials of some sort, whether it's an entry level or skill up, it's about 90%. So they may can get in with that 62%, but normally they'll have to move to a higher certificate or degree in order to sustain or advance in those positions. So, so we are obviously in our P-20 efforts, this is our number one item that we're looking at, how to help transitions as Lou and others continues, Robin continues on our education continuum. This is truly at the top of our list of things that we need to do. A couple of pieces, I announced the award that CTE got, and I'm proud of that, but it looks like they put it in my notes again, so I'll, I'll just skip over that piece. But a couple items that I think it's important for us to know, and I'm glad to see some of the things in the budget of the legislature. We'd love to see more in education from early childhood all the way through post-secondary, but we've got a little while to work on this. And, and once again, we're talking about how we do our job to ensure that we get money for education, who we argue as a group, as a whole, is the most important thing in Kentucky, to get our kids to a place where they're self-sustainable, the generation afterwards. And I hope we continue to do this and do it together as much as we possibly can. The, we've gotten, received several grants around some of our student success efforts. You know, we got the large grant from the ECMC a while back, looking at our student basic needs. This past week, I got to be one of the national speakers with John King on talking about mental health. And Kentucky, we were out there first in post-secondary before COVID, looking at how we can do a better job, but COVID obviously exacerbated this. And it's like number one thing that's on our student basic needs calendar, if you want to call it that. So the idea, how we do this in a more holistic way to triage students that may have anxiety that if we don't do it early could turn into something bigger. The, these are all the conversations that we're having. Far more kids in K-12 as well as higher ed are experiencing some mental health need. Not all fully need to be triaged to a higher-level counselor, but one of the things that we know is an ever-growing concern. So the other hope is that we will figure out a way to work even closer with you in order to address this because it is, we talk a lot about learning loss. We probably need to be also talking a lot about what are some of those situations that creating, that are creating that learning loss, and surely mental health is one of those. This coming February, I mean, this February 26 and 27, we'll have our 12th Annual Student Success Summit in Bowling Green. Western will be our host. We'll have a lot of conversations with, around civic learning, civic education. We'll talk a lot about jobs for the future. We're going to really spend some time looking at how we can partner with our post-secondary institutions to do the work we do better in this area. Once again, Kentucky has pretty well led the way. We're number two in the country in completions, but we still have a long way to go. You know, most of our institutions are at an 80% retention rate over the last four or five years. COVID slowed us down, took us down, but we're coming back up. But still, we are having to look at what else can we do? We have now provided at all of our institutions, a last dollar in scholarship, we call a promised scholarship. If you're coming in as a Pell recipient, you can go to our institutions now and, and pretty well have it paid for. So how can we get this message out more? So these are the things, Madam Chair, we're working on that we hope to continue. Once again, just like you, we're busy this time of the year, but happy to take any questions that you may have of me.
Well, thank you so much for that report. Dr. Thompson, you have a really unique way of giving us good news and challenges in a, in a package that we just sit here and want to wrap our arms around. And that is, that is true today as well. So the continuum, the work of the continuum is really key here, and I want to put in a plug, as I will want to do, regarding the education workforce and how we improve our efforts and productivity in this area as well. I know we've got, that's a multifaceted issue, but I certainly look forward to seeing us knit together the system that will really support a clinical process for developing the education workforce with K-12 higher ed partnerships that make that clinical experience a reality and a rich, authentic reality. So I'm just kind of saying, our plate will never be empty, even as we achieve certain milestones, as we certainly are doing with our high, post-secondary education attainment goals and the process of supporting our students in, in process as an. as an institutional responsibility. We are getting all of this baked in now. So let's keep that goal of a rich productivity uh process for the education workforce on the table and, and front of mind, because we all know that's uh, that's gonna be a keystone issue for us now and going forward.
Well, first of all, I agree with you 100%. It's actually at the top of our workforce issues as a whole. Not just, uh, not just uh in the sense of the word that we need to work together, but this is a workforce crisis. Uh, I mean, it, and it's one that surely serves the state better if we address it. So our goal, Madam Chair, is to do exactly that, and that's what we want to do. We're in the process, I gave an example of last time, our post-secondary institutions are ready to do that. As you all know what's going on in Western Kentucky, uh, we're now setting up KSU with a state-of-the-art education uh process uh to do that, to provide some of these. But you know, it's gonna, it really, and I think you said this, and I agree, it's gonna take all of us to look at how do we get rid of policies that don't matter? How do we really set up a pipeline process that matters? How do we use new ways of thinking about garnering this? And, and I, I, I want to say this very clearly, and maybe I shouldn't, but I always say things I probably shouldn't say. We can't replace, we, we can't replace a good process pipeline to get our teachers highly clinically trained in a manner that matters with substitute items. We can't. None of our alternatives can fix the process that we need to fix. And that is the way we build the pipeline through, from K-12 into post-secondary with high energy level clinical experiences that they can serve all of our students, no matter if they're in Eastern Kentucky, middle of Louisville, or out in Western Kentucky. So we've got to figure out how we do this. And we're gonna need the help of the legislature, of the governor's office, all of us to do that. So I would agree. And, and I would say that even though I'm not against all the alternative pathways, that's not my point, but the alternative pathways cannot become the main pathway. And so I, I fully, from my vantage point, uh, not just in my role, but also as a Kentuckian who's been in education in Kentucky now, I won't tell you how long, because I want y'all to think I'm young. We've got, this has to be number one on our list as a workforce crisis and address it in that manner.
Well, Dr. Thompson, if you, if we can count on you saying something that you probably shouldn't say, you can count on us loving it, okay? And repeating it, because you know, to your, to your last point, let us see what kind of alternatives we see develop when we get the system, the backbone of the system, to be state-of-the-art and reliable for every candidate going into every position as a novice practitioner, being skilled and knowing what they're doing as a novice practitioner and one who is ready to learn, who is ready to grow. So you know, let's see alternatives to that develop, and we will be on to something that is organic and healthy and really productive for the, for the state of Kentucky. So um, let's keep that front of mind. I know the, I know our, our delegation to the continuum is gonna be voicing this uh, this challenge. And um, it is, you know, it's all of us coming together to knit and then leverage uh our capacity to produce exactly what we need, that neither one of us could do alone. Any other questions and comments uh while we have Dr. Thompson with us? I thank you so much, because I know this is really, really a busy time.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I wish I could be with you all most of the day, but uh, you know how it is. I appreciate you letting me come in and give the report. Please call on me anytime that you need me, and I'll be there for you. Y'all have a good meeting.
Thank you so much. Secretary Link is usually here to present a report from the Education and Labor Cabinet, but he's unable to attend our meeting today. So we'll turn to interim Commissioner Robin Kenny for her, uh, her report.
Thank you so much, Chair. Um, it's been another couple of busy months um since we've been away from each other. Um, I was gonna share a little bit of the activities that I've um been privileged to participate in. First, I'd like to share with you about my trip to Johnson County. Um, the best, the very best part of this job, and you've heard other commissioners say this too, but the very best part is going out to school districts and talking with students. Um, I grabbed myself an Uber driver. His name was David Couch.
I can't believe you trusted him to drive you out there.
And we also had the pleasure of board member Steve Tremble joining us for the day. And we had a day that was just full of fun and activities. Um, of course, uh, David and Steve, both being alumni from Johnson County, I felt like I was traveling with celebrities. Everywhere I went, somebody said, "Oh, how are you? How, how have you been since whatever?" And then it was the connections, you know, "Well, this is so-and-so's sisters, who's so-and-so's brother, who, you know, worked here and they were superintendent." And it was just, I mean, you could feel the really warmth and caring of, of a community as I walked through their school buildings. Um, we get, we got to go through three. We got to visit an elementary, a middle, and a high school, which was a treat. And I will share with you, talking to the students, um, students were our tour guides um during our visit and very accomplished. Um, you know, in fact, I was like wondering if some of them should apply to be commissioner, because they were just, they were eloquent in their speech. Our, our, uh, my elementary uh tours, or our young lady and a young gentleman, and they weren't, they didn't have scripts or, they didn't have talking notes. They were just right on top of it. So really enjoyed that. Um, had the pleasure, I think in this picture, I'm talking with a young lady who um had, was telling me about herself and, in her portfolio that she had online, and we were going through that online. And she um at first showed me a picture of cheerleaders, because she had done that, but then now she's on the wrestling team, I think. So good for her. The other young lady that I got to visit at the elementary school, she was telling me about all of her travels. Her family had traveled extensively, and so she was telling me about her different trips and um that she liked roller coasters. And I asked her, "Well, where's the best roller coaster?", because I love roller coasters. She said, "Apple Days here in Johnson County. So you need to come back for the roller coaster at Apple Days." So uh, we just had a ball visiting. The other thing that I'll share with you, um, really seeing those vibrant learning experiences in action. Um, we got to see a solar car that is being built by Johnson County High School students. Um, and you could already see the welders, who very much identify themselves as welders, debating with the engineers, um, because they were saying, "Well, you know, if only those engineers would design those plans a little better, it would be easier for us to weld." And the welder's saying, "Well, it'd be easier for us to weld if they just got the plans right in the first place." And that was the discussion that we heard that day. So they very much, they have found what they find joy in. And um, they will be participating in a, um, a race. I think it's an endurance race, more than a speed race, in Texas this summer. So I really look forward to um seeing that from them. Um, and I have invited um on various trips, members of our leadership team to join me. Todd Allen joined me on a trip to LaRue County, and um, of course, David. And then we've got an upcoming visit, uh, Dr. Foster's gonna go to Menifee County with me. It's really important that as members of the leadership team, that we get into local school districts and that we are there um in a manner of service to our districts when it comes to a challenge that they're facing. So lots of leadership team go in that capacity, but also just to see the really good things, the great things that are happening in our schools. Um, the other thing that's been progressing, of course, is Kentucky United We Learn. And keeping our eye on the prize, keeping us moving forward in sort of this transition period that I'm leading. Um, they approved their moonshot statement. And um, I think it is simple but powerful. You know, you, you always try to put together something that everyone can understand and embrace. And I think the council has done a really good job. Um, they adopted that on January 24th, and you see it up on the screen, but the statement reads, "To build a prosperous Kentucky, we will launch an accountability system that is meaningful and useful to all learners." So really, really powerful moonshot statement from our council. Um, they also approved a definition of vibrant learning experiences. And I'm gonna read this one, because it's a little bit longer. So when, what is a vibrant learning experience? And they tried to put their arms around this one. "Learning that matters to students in partnership with families and communities. Students are agents of their own learning, engaged in relevant, authentic, and joyful learning opportunities. Vibrant learning honors students' cultural wealth, gifts, and interests. Vibrant learning culminates in the application of knowledge and skills demonstrated through personalized products." So they-
Saddle up midway.
Yeah, saddle up midway, and all the other great things that we've heard to hear today about vibrant learning experiences. Of course, we've talked a lot about United We Learn and keeping um those vibrant learning experiences, innovation, especially when it comes to assessment, and engaging our communities um more fully. Um, the next United We Learn Council convening is scheduled for April 25th and 26th. And thank you to board members that have participated in the Kentucky United We Learn Council meetings and um all the people that are participating and dedicating really their time to help us keep moving forward and come together for the future of education in Kentucky. And then finally, I wanted to share some news um about the Kentucky School for the Deaf. Um, we are still in process of looking for our next principal for the Kentucky School for the Deaf. My thanks to another interim, Dr. Lynn Petrie, who has been acting as our principal this year. Much appreciation to Dr. Petrie for his efforts, leading the school and, and taking care of our students and staff. But we do have the search underway for our next um principal. And just wanted to share with you that I had the opportunity of going and meeting with a lot of the um students, staff, and alumni, and the community members um in Danville. And as part of uh listening from them and their desires, we have changed the posting, some of the minimum requirements on the posting, to require um deaf education and a um advanced um sign language rating. Someone that can be able to really communicate with our students and staff. And so we have added those as minimum requirements. And we are really hopeful that we will find people um to come and lead our school that have that background, skill, and experience. The posting closes on um February 9th, so very, it's not to, this week. Um, and then we'll see what kind of candidate pool. I am scheduled to go back and talk with the advisory committee at KSD next week, so that I can give them an update on where we are. But I'm really appreciative of the input that we have received and the importance of selecting the right person to, to lead this special school. Um, I think that's all that I have, and that concludes my summary remarks. Of course, my um full report can be found in the board's portal, and I'm happy to take any questions, or if Steve would like to weigh in on our visit to Johnson County.
I would like to comment a little bit about it. You know, it, it means a lot to the schools uh when the commissioner shows up, and, and they were so excited and to show off all the great things the teachers are doing there in, in Johnson County. And, and I was, I was just admired the commissioner coming in with her black and gold outfit on. I mean-
Gotta wear the school colors when you come.
She said you had a tough time finding that black and gold, though, with all the green that you had in Western, Western Hills. But uh, it was, it was great. Uh, she, the commissioner helped uh find where the blood splatter came in forensic class from the gun and-
That was cool.
And uh, and also set in the solar car, which wasn't an easy thing to do, I can tell you that. Uh, David Couch also got in the car, too. I wasn't even gonna try.
You weren't talking about David Couch's car, are you?
No, we, well, no, it's a solar car. But uh, so uh, it was, it was a great day, and, and uh, they were so excited. And I appreciate the commissioner taking her time to go out to the schools, because it means so much. And she did such a good job. She's in her element. You can tell when she's around those kids, she's just as happy as she could be.
It was fun.
It was a good day. Sure was. I appreciate it. I appreciate the invitation.
Being around our students is uh, it's, it's bond for the spirit, isn't it?
And as I continue to travel, if any other board members want to come out, I won't make you be the Uber driver. Love to have you.
Well, keep us posted on your itinerary.
On your shenanigans.
Let us know when you're in our area.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Kenny. This is um a busy time uh and, and one that is uh supporting your spirit as well, and we benefit from the service. Now we will move to our consent agenda board. As you know, uh, our consent agenda gives us an opportunity to um consider uh several items at one time. And as soon as I get the right notes in front of me, we can proceed. This uh motion that we will ask for, requires a vote, consists of the consent agenda and allows for approval in one action. KDE staff identified these items as those that are non-controversial and routine in nature. The consent agenda was distributed to members in advance of the meeting to allow sufficient time for review. This month's agenda includes several waiver requests pertaining to district facilities projects. Please note, the KDE Office of Finance and Operations is currently working toward a process to allow for internal review and approval of these types of requests in the future. At this time, does any board member have a wish to have any consent agenda item moved to the regular discussion or action items? Seeing none, uh, we will proceed. I will ask the board to entertain a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve those items on the consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. I will ask if there's any further discussion or debate. I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you very much. The consent agenda is approved. And we will now move to uh an action item regarding Madison County. I'll ask Associate Commissioner Matt Ross and KDE Division Director Shay Ritter to present this request to the board.
Thank you, Chair. Um, so this request is for approval of the board. We have to seek approval, or a district has to ask for approval when a site acquisition and uh our property acquisition and site development costs exceed 10% of the total project. We had one of these on the waiver um list, and we considered putting this one on the waiver list, except that it had some uh sort of unique, maybe geological features to the site that we thought was worth bringing to your attention and discussing. Um, I think we have Superintendent Gilliam here, and, and I'll let Shay add anything else to, before we hear from Superintendent Gilliam.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, just for context, uh, once you do the math on this, it's over our 10% threshold, it's 17.4%. We're starting to see sort of slowly that cost of development is creeping up along with other costs. Not really shocked by these numbers. Everything's got more expensive, so land's getting more expensive. Uh, as I'm sure Superintendent Gilliam has noticed in Madison County. Uh, but 17.4% is what triggered this waiver to come in front of you all, so just for background on that.
So do you suggest the board would benefit from hearing from Superintendent?
Yes, he's available with us. I believe he can hear us. If y'all have any questions, or I'll let him speak, of course.
Board uh members, do you have questions, or?
I think he's trying to speak.
Please, I, I really would like for the superintendent to address us.
If you all are ready. Uh, thank you. I, I appreciate this, uh, this opportunity very much. Uh, so yes, you can see we are, we did a waiver request, and that uh it did exceed the, the 10% threshold, which, which kicked in the waiver. Uh, as you look, you, uh, on your consenting agenda, you had, uh, I think, a few other of these, very similar to ours in terms of the, the cost overage. Which is, you know, it's, uh, it's pretty consistent. Actually, I honestly believe it will be under the 10% when you actually get in the, the total cost. We're having to use the number off the DFP, which if we can build this school for 19 million, I will be- which if we can build this school for $19 million, I will be extremely pleased. However, it is for a new elementary school to replace a one, one that was built in the 1920s. The, I think what kicked this off of the consent agenda, and actually we need to address, is the fact that it does have pyridic shale in the, in the geotech report. In fact, it's highly expansive pyridic shale, which is a concern, which is an issue. The, but when you look at Madison County, particularly this area of Madison County, pyridic shale is prevalent everywhere. If we want to build a school in this area, we will encounter pyridic shale. We, we frequently, in our construction pieces, have encountered pyridic shale. And we are familiar with the mitigation, mitigation pieces there, which in order to mitigate the, the main thing, I'm not an engineer, but having dealt with it, the main thing is to keep it covered up. One good piece about this property, actually, that makes this- in it, one piece that makes this a preferred property over several others is the fact that the, the lay of the land is very flat and the pyridic shale is, is below the surface. We really do not believe that we will end up having to uncover much or any pyridic shale because we're not going to have to cut into and dig very deep on this piece of property. So for the most part, we would, we will likely not even encounter it. Whereas other locations within the area, we would encounter it even more. So, so not only is it, while it's there, it's going to be there anywhere in that area. And, and this actually has a benefit in that we will probably, it will require less mitigation than, than many other areas in the county. So I'd be willing to take any questions that you all have regarding this.
We started- we started learning from Lee County about shale. So I don't know a lot about it, but is it, is, can I infer from what you just said, David, that if the shale is undisturbed or less disturbed, that it's less likely to cause a problem in construction and then down the road with the cracked walls? Yeah, just don't, yeah. Try not to, try not to get into it.
How do I touch it?
The, the issue with pyridic shale, and again, I'm not speaking from an engineer's perspective, just a superintendent having listened to them. The pyridic shale, it's, it's an expansive product, and it expands when it is exposed to, to air and, and the elements. So if you have to dig down into it, you, the, the mitigation or the remedy for it is you simply cover it up very quickly, okay? So if you dig a footer into, into dirt that has, in the ground that has pyridic shale in it, you have to come back within, within 24 hours or so and pour a, either a sludge mixture or get it covered back up. You can dig down, you can cover it back up. And then, so you have to dig and then pour right behind it. That's what it is. If it, if you leave it exposed to the elements, it will expand. And then if you pour your concrete in on top of the expanded material, once you cover it all back up, it will, it will, you know, go back down. What, that, that's what, it will settle, and that's what leaves those air gaps and those space gaps, and that's where you get cracking in your foundation. If you pour immediately behind it, you can't. When I was principal, we built Madison, we did a wing on it, Madison Southern, and encountered a lot of pyridic shale. And you, we simply had the concrete trucks right behind the backhoes. And, and the engineers on site, they dig footer. The engineers inspect, they give them the thumbs up, and they pour right in behind it. It's that type of thing. It can drive up your construction costs a little bit, but not, not extreme. If you know it's there and you take the proper precautions, it is not an issue. It becomes an issue when you are not aware that it's there, so.
And then one quick question for David and one for Matt and Shay. Which elementary is going to be replaced?
Waco.
Waco, got it. And then you guys, the 10%, I think, is always, has always been a problem, or at least for a long time. When I think about some of the site development we did, it could be wildly different if you, you're going to have to put in water and sewer and lights and do leveling and all of that kind of stuff on one piece of property. But if you buy another in a more developed area, then those costs all don't go into the 10%, right?
Correct. Well, and not terribly long ago, if you'll recall, we did Johnson County. In eastern Kentucky, I remember Dr. Todd had even said, "It's probably just a fact of life, and in that area, you're always going to have, exceed 10%." Mountaintop, trying to knock it over, et cetera. It's a pretty common request. And I do believe, and this is something Superintendent Gilliam had mentioned, is the, it gets a little technical with the numbers, but the, the cost that's on their district facility plan versus today's cost. And we've talked to staff a little bit about how do you take today's cost and apply it? Because if they did their district facility plan four years ago, costs were much cheaper. So all of a sudden, the math works out that it's always going to be over 10%. So we are going to take a look at that. And just think, yesterday or day before, the General Assembly's dropped a bill to continue House Bill 6088, which was the facilities bill. And part of the language in the, in this new version is to move the, excuse me, the waiver requirements from you all to us at KDE, and there's an appeal process. So if that passed sort of as is, we feel like, we did a very quick review of it yesterday. Because you're allowed five minutes to review bills, and you have to respond to them. But we did a very quick review, and we feel like that process would remove a lot of these consent items today, for example, back to the department. And if we had an issue, the districts could appeal right to you all.
But it also begs the question, is 10% the right threshold?
Right.
Right. So, and I, I really hope that it is understood as we have considered these requests, these waiver requests, it's been an amazing opportunity for the board and our, our other stakeholders to become aware of the considerations that have to be addressed as we approach these projects. And every district in the Commonwealth will have either building or renovation projects that will be of interest and essential to the growth in their and further support of their, of their students. So it is, but we do want decisions placed at the, at the place of authority and knowledge. So the, the staff working with the school district staff here have presented cases that we can understand and embrace. But it is, it's been our privilege and an opportunity to learn and embrace these projects and these aspirations and understand the challenges of just the facilities process of the education system in the state. So board members, we have a waiver request. If there are further comments? I was just wondering, do the construction companies offer any kind of guarantees with the mitigation process?
We're, I don't know if that's directed at me or not. We're under the same warranties and everything of every other, every other piece. So we do a geotech report, all of our, when you do a construction project, you have to have a geotech report initially. And then, then the engineers do the design. So you have the engineers, you have the architect, you have the construction company, and you have the geotech company. And then you have special inspections done by separate engineering firms that are all layered into that. And those are all part of our, our KDE facilities process. Those pieces are required. And with, with that, they all have different levels of guarantees and certifications and all of those, those types of pieces.
Is this a construction management project?
We have yet to determine whether we're going to do construction management or GC on this one. We'll be making, we'll be determining that in the next few weeks.
Okay.
I'd like to make that motion that we approve the proposed site acquisition for Madison County schools.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Thank you so much, the motion carries. Thank you for joining us. Our next item is a review item regarding the Advanced Kentucky Update. So we would like to invite those participants to the table. KDE Chief Academic Officer Mickey Ray, the Advanced Kentucky Executive Director Anthony Myers, and KDE Deputy Commissioner Thomas Woods Tucker. Is Thomas going to join us? Please, thank you. Welcome. Mickey, will you begin?
I'm happy to welcome Executive Director Anthony Myers and other members of his team today. This is an annual review item, and so they will be able-
Mickey, could you turn your mic up? Make sure it's on and up the volume. Thanks so much.
It stays there. But I don't, I want to be brief so that Anthony can, can begin and deliver their comments. But they are a longstanding partner of the KDE and have very impressive outcomes in terms of the way that they're reaching both teachers and students across the Commonwealth.
And Chair, I do apologize, I was called to the office. I do apologize for stepping out. Anthony is here to give us his annual update, and it's always a pleasure to work with Anthony in Advanced Kentucky.
Thank you. Chair Robinson, Commissioner, members of the board, thank you for having us here. Each year, we're, it's our privilege to come and share the work that we do with you. And we know that the time that we've been given, so we'll jump right in and be as quick and efficient as we can. So next slide. So about us, we pretty much have the same staff, most of the same staff we've had since we started in 2008. We have had some changes, obviously, along the way. I do have with me at the table today Annette Williams. She was here last year, a couple of years now, who runs our Access to Algebra program. We initially started as an AP program. We now have three big programs that we run. But she runs the Access to Algebra program focused in middle school math, and she'll be doing her part of the presentation later. But new this year is Aaron Timmons. Aaron Timmons has recently accepted the position of being College Readiness Program Director, which is the AP work that we do. And he has been doing that now over a year, year and a half. So he'll be giving you the AP update portion of the, of the presentation this year. Next slide. So statewide participation, just so you have a context for the numbers of teachers and students that we support, you can see them there. You will notice, if you remember from last year, computer science is not mentioned. And you may recall, we were here in December doing a separate presentation for the computer science work that we do. If you include the computer science numbers in there, that number exceeds 10,000 enrollments that we support across the state. So just so you know where, where your funding goes and where we're doing our work. Next slide. So I'll turn it over to Annette, and she'll start us with Access to Algebra and go from there.
Access to Algebra serves teachers and students in grades six through eight math. And we use the PSAT 8-9 to measure success. According to the PSAT 8-9 data, 37% of eighth grade students in 2023 met the college readiness benchmark of 430 on the exam as compared to only 25% in 2022. So you can see that students are making significant gains after COVID. And that's a 12% in, a 12% percentage point increase. In addition to tracking just the eighth grade achievement, we also look closely at student growth from seventh to eighth grade. So the individual student growth data in the second block under Key Metrics includes only the students who took the exam in both seventh grade and eighth grade. So the numbers look a little different. As you can see, in 2022, 37% of seventh graders were in range of meeting the college readiness benchmark as eighth graders. In range means that they scored a 410 or above on the test. And that 410 to 430 group with extra help and effort is expected to meet the benchmark by eighth grade. Those below 410 are considered more than a grade level behind. So as you can see, the data from those students as eighth graders shows that 39% actually met the benchmark or surpassed the benchmark. So many more students met than were expected. And that means those students who were more than a grade level behind made significant gains. Access to Algebra is an incentive-based model. And last year, we awarded $110,000 to students and teachers in the program in incentives. And students can earn a $50 incentive check in one of two ways. As an eighth grader, if they meet the college readiness benchmark of 430, they get a check. And also, we are awarding them for growth. So if they show an increase of 70 points in their scores from their seventh grade year to their eighth grade, they can also earn an incentive. And those students that, that make that 70-point gain, according to College Board, the 70 points means it's aggressive growth. So that's why we use the 70 points. According to the picture, you can see that we also continue to train teachers through laying the foundation. That is a picture from one of our summer trainings in Shelby County. Last summer, we trained about 120 math teachers across Kentucky. We train them through three years of our program. And at the end of the three years, they will have had 12 full days or 72 hours of strictly math content training. So that, that's quite a bit. in addition to a focus on student achievement and growth, a key element of our program is increasing the access to eighth grade algebra. Next slide, please. Anthony will tell you about a study that we have done on that.
So every few years, I challenge myself and our staff to take a deep dive and look at our, our data anew, right? And then ask some of the tougher questions that we get from our teachers at our schools. One of the tough questions that we tackled this year with the Access to Algebra program was, we're obviously out advocating for, for more opportunity for students, more rigorous opportunities in eighth grade. But they would challenge us back, how many students should be taking Algebra I in the eighth grade? And if you've been in education long enough, you know that's, that's, that line has moved back and forth a lot, depending on who you ask. But I thought, could our data reveal this to us? Could it give us some guidance on, on answering that question? Or at least giving our schools guidance towards answering for themselves? We don't present this as conclusive data. We present this as a, a point of discussion that we would like our districts to engage in and just ask deep questions about how to serve their students. So what you're looking at is, if you look on the X-axis, so we had a number of students who were what we call complete students. They were in, we had them tested in the seventh grade, got a baseline score with them, and they had remained in that school in the eighth grade. So we took out any students that had experienced immigration in or out for, for the school. So we wanted to know, we had them for two years, what did we see? And we also, another data point that we collect are course-taking patterns in eighth grade. So that's what this data is, is going to reveal. Growth of students and based on the courses that they take, correlated to the courses they take. So we lumped all these students together, right? And we separated them out by baseline score. So on the X-axis, you'll see their seventh grade baseline score. So, and then if you look at the, the graph, what the graph is revealing is the growth in points on the PSAT 8-9 in eighth grade. So for example, 390 represents a group of students from across all of our schools that scored 390 in the seventh grade. And you can see that if you add, that's 12 points of growth. They grew to 402 in the eighth grade on average, okay? One of the things that struck me is we expected diminishing returns as you approach benchmark. The other important number on here is 430. That is the eighth grade benchmark for the PSAT 8-9. So that's what we're going for, right? As they approach 430, we're seeing that they're performing less and less. That was a oh no moment, right? Well, what's happening here? And if you look at 390, 400, 410, 420, none of those students were able to meet benchmark on average. So hmm, we need to answer that, right? Next slide. So this is a group, same group of students, same ability, scoring the same in seventh grade. But where the first bars that, that you saw were, were students enrolled in eighth grade math, and I'm going to include honors math, or below. The second bar are students coming in with the same baseline from seventh grade, being enrolled in Algebra I or higher. And if you, if you look at this set, that same group that was at 390, and just last thing, you don't have to go back, but 390, that growth now was, grew to 439, which moved that group over benchmark. So our conclusion today, after talking with our schools, talking with our districts, is what we're seeing is a, a ceiling on content, not a ceiling on ability. And that, you know, And that, you know, we need to ask, what are we exposing our kids to? Are we giving them sufficient room to grow? So. Next slide.
Thank you. The College Readiness Program continued to show positive results for the 2223 school year. One of the ways we look at performance is by the participation of first-year teachers to us. So if you take a look at the graph, you can see that there was a 190% increase in the AP Math, Science, English, Computer Science, and Capstone qualifying scores from a teacher's baseline year to their first year of participation with us. The next slide. Teachers also saw an increase in the number of exam takers. And then the, next slide, please. They also saw an increase in number of enrollments. So we're very excited by this because, you know, it shows that more students have access and are choosing to enroll in these courses, and they're also experiencing success. So it's not just all of them coming in and they don't do well, so they are also performing. Thanks to the additional funding allocated by the legislature for AP exam fees over the past biennium, statewide exam-taking rates have increased, as you can see up there in the chart on the upper right. Combined with the additional AP exam fee assistance that we provide, exam-taking rates for students in the College Readiness Program exceed even the statewide rates, and even more so when you take a look at the economically disadvantaged and underrepresented minority populations. Over the next few slides, you'll also see some snapshots of some three-year support that we provide. So our content staff, many of which are behind us here, they make regular visits to classrooms, they work with teachers, they talk to students, they co-teach lessons, they help talk about the benefits of taking advanced coursework. We also engage in a variety of professional learning experiences with the teachers, and you can see in your slides some comments from teachers about the services that they receive throughout the year. So Anthony mentioned that we always try to take a look at some deeper questions about our program, and one of the deep dives that we took for the College Readiness Program was to take a look at the impact of our program across a teacher's three-year experience. So, the results that we always report to you about year-one performance, they're always high, and a lot of that is because there's simply a lot, there's a large influx of students from a teacher's baseline year to their first year of participation. That's because those teachers could be teaching AP for the first time, those AP courses may not have been offered at the school before, so there's a large population to draw from initially. What we've looked at, though, and what we're happy to report, is that after conducting a data analysis of teachers that have completed all three years of participation with us, we continue to see positive, significant growth in enrollments, exam takers, and qualifying scores over the three years. So the first set of bars you see on the left there, those are all students, and then we've broken it down more so for female populations, next slide, economically disadvantaged populations, and then the next slide, underrepresented minority populations. So we're very encouraged by this because, you know, we know not all teachers are able to fulfill all three years of participation in the College Readiness Program for a variety of factors, especially in today's climate. But for those that are able to complete all three years, the impact of our College Readiness Program is felt not just during that first year, but continuing through their three years. And, you know, the content knowledge, the pedagogy, and the comfort that a teacher receives and acquires during their time with us, hopefully you can see translates into continued success, not just for them, but also for their students. And then also, there's a slide of additional teacher training that the teachers received over the course of the year. Thank you.
Wow, as Oliver Twist says, more! We want more. Thank you so much, this is inspiring, and I was listening to you, and I wrote down exposure, which I think we call access, but it is, that also equals expectations. I mean, when you say to these students, here you are, you are, we expect that you can learn this, and guess what, you do. And that is so affirming to these students, it has to be. Thank you, inspiring. Comments, questions?
Questions, first of all, thank you. Excellent report there. Some of the questions that I have is in relationship to moving forward, because, you know, we had kind of a discussion before, it's the exposure and access and more people and more things. I guess that's what my question goes to currently in the House, you know, Senate or House Representative Tilton has, you know, a numeracy bill. So how does this fit into this work, not fit into this work or move this work in relationship because he says four through eight? So I'm taking that he's taking information from what we're seeing here, but tell me how that is going to continue working like our letters program does in literacy, I guess.
Thank you for the question, Dr. Poe. I think one of the most important things that would come from the bill, if it is funded, it would allow us to move forward with our partners like Advanced Kentucky. And as you know, there are three Kentucky partners named within that legislation. KCM is one of them, the Kentucky Center for Mathematics, and they have a rich history of serving the elementary space, working with math coaching. What we would love to be able to do is have increased funding to partner more with Advanced Kentucky to expand the efforts that they're talking about here. So certainly, that access to algebra, and I was especially compelled alongside of you with the findings that they have in eighth grade and the data around the PSAT, and just access and opportunity to rigorous mathematics coursework. And so, we would love to be able to move forward to be able to expand the programming that they have in that space. I also would like to see folks have the option of adopting, laying the foundation for mathematics, for ELA. There's just a lot of rich opportunities that we could make available to the field with additional funding for mathematics specifically. And then Pimsleur is another named partner, and Pimsleur is doing much work in the leadership network space in both mathematics and science. And so we would love the, again, we would love the opportunity to be able to work with them to increase access and opportunity for educators as well, to have the professional learning, to provide those supports for students across the Commonwealth.
A follow-up question.
In relationship to the thing, so great AP work there, do we have data, do you have data on the students that do the access to algebra, but that, let's say they don't do the AP, but they do dual credit in relationship to their success in dual credit too?
So the way our contracts are written, we have contracts with middle schools for the data, we're limited with the data that we can have access to. So we have data for the students in middle school while they're with us in middle school, we do not have that longitudinal data as they move into high school. It's a great question, it's a question that I would like to see the answer to. And we have partnered with KY Stats in the past to do other longitudinal work that we've presented here in the past, so that's on our, that's on our horizon, I'm sure.
And I get, and one last statement, I guess, you know, I'm glad to see the unrepresented minorities, the increase there, because as part of Dr. Thompson was talking about earlier, the access or afterwards, that there was a report that just came out that his group did, that, you know, it's not, there's a $9 billion gap in our underrepresented minorities from being able to go on to post-secondary because of what you did. Great job in showing that representation, because I think on, you know, a lot of times we get hit on our NAEP scores and the other things, and to me, the issue is, what interventions do we give them after we see that particular score? So, you know, we just need to get more funding so we have more access, exposure, whatever we want to say, to our underrepresented minorities after we take those NAEP tests. If we could get them in programs like this, I mean, it's showing results, so, thank you.
I was just wondering, what is the distribution of, across the state, of participating teachers?
Just in general, or for a particular program?
Yeah, just far western Kentucky, and it, you know, I was just wondering.
So, we have a map. If you go to our website on our impact, I'll answer it this way first, you scroll to the bottom, there's an interactive map, and you can see by district and by fiscal district, basically, their participation in our College Readiness Program, Access to Algebra, and our Computer Science initiatives. So it'll be a little drop-down as you hover over what you're looking for. It's, we are an application-based, all of our programs are by application, so schools have to reach out to us. I mean, we're always trying to convince schools to reach out to us, obviously, but they, so, that's generally the way it goes. So I guess we're all over.
East to west.
East to west, yeah.
What I will do is work with Dr. Brewer to get that to the board members, I'll get that link for you.
Yes.
You said it's by application process, how does that application process work?
So, they're open year-round. All a school has to do is, we are, we do ask for some data, just because we want to know, and some information from the schools. We want to know where they are in the process of looking at, thinking about their middle school math program, or thinking about their AP programs, but it's not that intensive. So that initiates a conversation, when then we go out and we talk to them, meet them in their district, and just, you know, have them identify how they think that this program can help, because that helps us, right? And then we set growth goals based on those conversations.
Okay. And then what is the district's responsibility in this program?
We do ask for some matching funds, usually around travel. We try to negotiate with these districts where they have funds available, we try to do everything we can to bring the program to them, so, but there is some commitment, I guess, from the districts for all the programs, maybe with the exception of computer science, and that's still funded from a national program that we partner with, so there's really no barrier for that. Most of it's commitment, commitment to the improvement.
Dr. Todd?
Could you go back to the last Access to Algebra slide? I'm looking at the students who made a 400 or 410 in the seventh grade, if they stick with eighth grade math in the eighth grade, they still don't gain enough points to go up to 430. How many kids stay in eighth grade math versus how many take the algebra?
So if you take the band between 370 and 420, which is the band that we typically target using the PSAT, and what schools would typically target and identify as the cutoff, where they would identify students' algebra or not, and these are the students most capable of being at benchmark in the eighth grade, that represents 2,300 students of the 7,000 student data set, which is a third of all the students.
2,000, what, 2,000 of what?
It's a third of all the students in that data set.
Take eighth grade or take algebra?
That were in the eighth grade math that could have taken algebra and could have seen the benefit.
And what determines whether they choose to take it or not?
That's, well, a lot of it varies by district. Districts have different policies about how they identify and offer Algebra I for students.
There's still a lot of gatekeeping.
I will say, there is a state statute that is in place and has been for many years, that if a student wants access to Algebra I or more rigorous coursework at middle school, that district is charged with providing that opportunity for the student. I think a lot of it is that we are just, we are doing what we have always done, and tradition outweighs innovation in some sense, and so what we're trying to do is to signal quality around that this is already permissible, so that more students do have access to more rigorous coursework at middle school.
Last comment, if you look at 2,000 students who take eighth grade math, they made no progress.
Yes.
Yet we have bad math scores.
Yes.
So when are we going to get the message that we got to raise the aspiration for these kids, and maybe raise the responsibility on educators to put them in those categories where they can move up the ladder, so.
Another interesting point I would just like to bring up real quickly, is if you look at, if you go even further down that scale, these are typically students who would not be considered for Algebra I in the eighth grade at all. But if you look at the opportunity there, when given the opportunity, they demonstrate that they can learn and can show additional learning from being in that. And it's not to say the class has to be Algebra I, because we're also talking about algebraic thinking, we're pretty flexible about how we offer algebra to students when we work with districts, but the number is 72% of all the students that could show growth. So that's what we tell our districts. So it's not an algebra for all, but maybe it's an algebra for most.
Yeah. This is fascinating information, and just very inspiring, in fact. So we hope to, again, enhance our advocacy with this information and other information so that we can support the notion that more of our Kentucky students across the state, those, we got a lot of different kind of unrepresented students in our student population who don't have exposure or access, and therefore, they don't have an opportunity to realize the growth that they have the potential to achieve. Thank you for helping us think about this anew, appreciate the work of Advanced Kentucky. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Our next item is regarding the Kentucky High School Athletic Association report on Title IX deficiencies. We would ask our KHSA Commissioner Julian Tackett to come to the table. Oh, I see, now, okay, we have KHSA General Counsel, Chad Collins with us, and the KDE General Counsel, Todd Allen.
Madam Chair.
Please.
Board members, good morning. The Board has designated the Kentucky High School Athletics Association as its agent to manage all middle and high school interscholastic athletics throughout the state. Part of that designation requires that KHSA conduct Title IX field audits of all of its member schools and report to the Board on a regular basis of the outcome of those audits. So we have Chad Collins here at the table with me to report to the Board on KHSA's process for selecting schools, conducting those audits, and the outcomes, as well as KHSA Commissioner Julian Tackett online, joining us remotely.
And Dr. Robinson, I'll defer to Commissioner Tackett, who is here online. I'm here and happy to answer any questions, but the expert is the commissioner.
Thank you. Dr. Tackett, please.
Thanks, Chad, and thank you, Madam Chair, I hope you can hear me okay. I think the, we have had a rotation of schools for a number of years, this is, I think, our fourth cycle of audit visits to every school, and we obviously had a two-year hiatus with our schools asking us not to spend a lot of time in their buildings during the pandemic, so last year was the resumption of that. So the rotation stayed about the same, so the group you see before you would have been audited about seven years before, and that rotation stays in place unless we get reports of a school that needs a more focused look. And we also have several of our Boards of Education and/or schools who will request, can you work us in early, because we think we've got an issue or two? And so our retired educators that serve as our audit team go out, and they have a checklist they go through, they do a number of things while they're onsite, make recommendations for the local schools, and really try to make sure that we keep, in a time of tremendous administrative turnover, keep our focus on continuing and improving opportunities.
Thank you so much. Board members, do you have questions, comments? This is, please.
So just a couple of concern, heartburn kind of items on the report. What happens to those schools now that we have the report, and in a couple of instances where there is a Title IX concern?
Right, well, certainly, and I'll let the commissioner kind of follow up on it, but we work and have our Title IX auditors work with the schools, they follow up on any deficiencies that are found, they usually have a corrective action plan, that they work with them, and it is a collaborative process. The schools are generally very receptive to helping address the issues that we have. Certainly, in most of the instances that you can see, they followed up and corrected them, there's still a couple that are hanging out, and our auditor, our staff, Assistant Commissioner Darren Bilberry, who's our main point of contact in addition to Commissioner Tackett, they will work with the schools and make sure, and follow up, and make sure that there is response and a plan to bring everything into equity as is intended. Commissioner, did you have anything else further you'd want to follow up on there?
Well, the only thing to help reassure you, Dr. Young and others, is this report was completed last summer, and many of those steps may involve either capital expenditures or things that may take a little time to get board policies adopted. If a school remains on that deficiency list when we produce this year's report, there's certainly a significantly more focused effort with the superintendent and with the schools involved to be sure that we're not letting something just languish. It's not, it's not going to, and our auditors are assigned specific schools, so they are regularly following up. As Mr. Collins said, we, the other thing we do that has really helped the public accountability is as soon as these reports are produced, they're public, they're on our website, we have parents that are checking on them, we have people who were, had these concerns that are checking on it. That's been extremely helpful in speeding along the process.
Thank you. Other questions? Other questions or comments on the Title IX deficiency report? I appreciate your coming to help us dig into this, understand this report. It's an important matter for us to attend to on an annual basis. But I think if we, as we go forward, let's see if we can also reflect on where we are now and where we are, a comparison of where we are next so that we can see what interventions have, the impact of any interventions that you have been able to execute on behalf of the deficiencies.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Tackett, thank you for joining us.
Thanks, ma'am. You all have a great day.
Our next item, please get ready to welcome our celebrity teacher of the year, Kevin Daly to the table and those working with him, our record, uh, recognition and awards coordinator, just to provide an update. And welcome, Kevin. I hear that you've been making yourself known in these quarters.
Good morning. My name is Glipdis Anne Greider Jones. I'm here with Jennifer Ginn, our Director of Communications here at KDE. And one of the exciting programs that we manage in the Division of Communications is our Kentucky Teacher of the Year Awards Program. And this morning I have the honor of introducing you to Kevin Daly. And some of you may remember about five months ago, we announced Kevin as the 2024 Kentucky Teacher of the Year in a ceremony at the State Capitol. Some of you were there joining us for that celebration. And really just a few weeks ago, about five weeks ago, Kevin has started a six-month ambassadorship here with the agency. He has been meeting with members of our KDE leadership team and learning more about the resources and opportunities that our KDE provides to students, teachers, and community members. And Kevin has also embarked upon a project that he will be, I think, giving, providing an update with you momentarily. And so he's here to talk about the, the journey so far and just say hello to you all this morning. So Kevin, please take it away.
Hey, y'all. So I'm really glad I have a Dr. Jones. Everyone needs one because she can handle all of the formal stuff and then I can just be me. Because at the end of the day, I'm a classroom teacher. My name's Kevin Daly and I was announced the 2024 Kentucky Teacher of the Year. And I say that every time just because it, it fills me up a little bit to just be able to say that. And it's also very wild because I am a middle school teacher from Ballyshannan Middle School in Boone County, Kentucky, very proudly. And to be given this honor is something that I do not take lightly. It is a huge responsibility. It's honestly an impossible task to represent all teachers in Kentucky because we are a state of incredible, incredible teachers. And I believe that to my core because I am a product of the public school teachers in Kentucky. That was my cue for the next, for the next slide. There we go. So in 2021, I was also announced the Milken Educator Award winner. And so when I was announced, given the Milken Award, I was tasked with this question. Everybody asked it. What, like, why, why are, why did they pick you? And then I had to ask myself that question, like, why me? And that, if you've never asked yourself that question, it is very revealing because it's been a journey of three years of me asking myself that question nearly every single day. Why me? Because like every teacher, we serve our students. We try our best not to think about where we are, but sometimes we need to do that. And so in that process, I was thinking, why, why me? Why am I here? And the very first step is the people around me. That's why I'm here. It starts with my family. I'll choke up. I always tell everyone I'm a crier. So if you see it, just move past it. So it starts with my family. I learned so many things from my family and I could talk for an hour about them, but I'm told I only have like 10 to 15 minutes. So I'll, I'll show pictures instead. And then it goes back to the inspiration or the person who kind of helped me be me. If you've heard me talk, you've heard me talk about Ms. Linda Fox. She's up there in the top right. Ms. Fox believed in me at a time where I didn't believe in myself. That's what a public school teacher can do. That's what a teacher can do. Um, as I grew into this profession, I was not, I didn't start teaching right out of college. I was late to it. Graduate of UK when Dr. Todd was there. So I had the most amazing fortune to be around a group of teachers who were also going through the same thing. We got to stay late every day together. We got to struggle and cry and celebrate and cheer and all of the things that you experience as a teacher. And that luck and fortune has continued at every single step of my career. I cannot tell you the fortune that I have and the, the importance of having a team around you of people who genuinely care about you and that share your mission to care about kids. And so there's a few pictures of those folks, too. I also can't, I wouldn't be here without leadership. In that bottom left picture there, that's the best principle you'll ever, you'll ever come across in, in this country. I assure you that. Erica Bowles is the type of leader that trusts her people. And she trusts them through some things that maybe require a little risk. She lets you be you and she values you for who you are. And that's what leaders should do, in my opinion. And then most importantly are, is my reason, my purpose for being a teacher, and that's my students. I didn't want to put a picture of my students in there because that's a lot of forms to put that out. So I put a picture of my niece over there in the bottom right because she's also a Boone County student. And that's why I do what I do. And I hope, genuinely, I hope that's why all of you are doing what you're doing here, too. So that's how I got here. I was also kind of, when I was developing a project, I was trying to think like, what is it that makes, that I have to say to teachers that are already great? The teachers that are already doing amazing things. What is it that I can contribute? And all I could come up with is I create a classroom that kids want to be in. And I know that sounds very simple, but I think it's the most important thing. And so I was like, on this little thought journey of how do you create a perfect classroom? How do you, and I'm not saying I have a perfect classroom. And that'll be evident here in a minute. But how do you do it? What does it take to be a perfect classroom teacher? And I think it requires a ton. Being a masterful teacher means that you know the science of education. Everyone here at the Department of Education, every one of you board members, everyone in K through beyond 12 education knows that you have to be a content expert. You have to know pedagogy. You have to know educational psychology, equitable teaching practices, all of these things that are wildly important. But that's the science of teaching. And while I would never discredit the science of teaching and the importance of that, there is an art to teaching that I hold much closer and much dearer. Because the art of the classroom is why kids want to learn. I, I want you to take a second. I asked students at the Student Advisory Council to take a full minute. I won't, I won't put you through that because a minute of wait time for all of you administrators out there who tell your teachers, it's a long time. But I'll give you about 10 seconds. And I want you to think about the teacher that made you feel like you were meant to be there at any level. Now, how many of you thought, man, that teacher made me want to be in that classroom because they use Kagan strategies every day? They think Pear shared me and I just knew it was for me. Now, that was important, but that's not why. And so I want to focus my project and my time on what makes a perfect classroom. And I believe that it is the teacher that makes the perfect classroom. I believe it is the art of teaching. And the most successful classrooms that I've ever been in, in my entire life, have been the ones where the classroom is a reflection of the individual teacher and where the classroom is allowed to be a reflection of that individual teacher. It's my click button. So I have this theory. My theory is that those classrooms are expressions of the teacher. They're not manufactured. They're not forced by anyone. They're places where the teacher gets to lean into all of their strengths despite their imperfections. I think the perfect classroom is by definition, the imperfect classroom. I use an example. The woman in the top right there and the woman in the bottom right there on that picture, those are current and former colleagues of mine who are the most masterful teachers you will ever see. Megan Tepey in the top right there, she teaches in, in my building. And if you talk to her students, which I've done, if you're a colleague or if you talk to her principal, they will all tell you in one way or another, she is the most consistent person you'll ever meet. Every kid, every adult, everyone knows, when you walk into Megan Tepey's classroom, you get consistency. You know what you're getting. If my principal, Erica Bowles, made me focus on that consistency, I would have been fired a long time ago. That is not who I am. I am erratic and sporadic and eccentric and you never know what you're going to get. And there are so many students who love that. That teacher in the bottom right there, Becky Watkins, she teaches at Gallatin County High School. That is her. I went to her school last week and I interviewed her students and I watched her teach and I talked to her colleagues. And every single one of them, in their own way, said that what she does could not be, it could not be further from Megan Tepey. One, one student put it best. She said, she just teaches with sparkle. And I was like, I've seen her teach. I've been around her. She's, she's a person I hold dear to my heart. And man, that's the best description I've ever heard. She teaches with sparkle. And she's so successful. And that's teaching. Teaching looks so different because kids look so different. Teaching has to be different because we have different people and we have different communities and we have different needs. And we all have to embrace that, I think, as educational stakeholders, as board members, as department members, administrators, teachers, students, community members, everyone. And so I have this plan to go out and celebrate these teachers. I want to find them. And to be clear, I'm not looking for the best at anything. I would never, this isn't an award. This isn't some like career thing. I want teachers who have made a classroom where people want to be, and I want to know all of them. One, I can learn from them and selfishly, I can be a way better teacher for my students by doing that. But two, I want them to be acknowledged both within their school and their community for the amazing, incredible work that they do, for the welcoming place that they make for their students. And on the back end of this, I want to distill some of those things down to create some practical guide for new teachers, for young teachers, for teachers in a rut, to say, look, you have magic as an educator. All you have to do is find it within yourself and make it your classroom. Because that's my belief. That's what's kept me going. If we talk about teacher retention, which I know is a, a big, huge issue, massively important issue. Do you know, want to know the times where I've, I've wanted to be a teacher more than anything else? It's when I know what I'm doing matters. It's when I feel valued. It's when I feel trusted. It's when I feel like the work that I'm doing means something. And that happens when I get to create my own imperfect classroom.
Sounds perfect. Thank you so much. It's fascinating to listen to you talk about the knowledge of pedagogy and the art or the skill of practice being how that hits the student. And so we need to recognize what are those instances where that comes together? And it seems as though it inspires you, Kevin.
I love teaching. I just love it. I think it is the best, most fulfilling thing that I could ever do. I left teaching for a year in the middle of my career because as every person in education knows, oh my God, it's so hard. And the emotional side of it is the hardest thing for me. But when I was out of the classroom, I tell this story sometimes, my wife at dinner one night, I was, I went back into engineering, making more money, way easier hours, let me tell you. And I was sitting at dinner and she just, it was a great day. It was a normal day. She said, Kevin, you just don't have any like light behind what you're doing. You just don't seem joyful anymore. Education brings me so much joy. And I hope it does you guys, too. I hope it makes you guys inspired to do what you do for the kids around us.
Yes, Dr. Collins.
You said you went back into engineering. What was your undergraduate degree in? What did you do before you went into classroom?
So I graduated from Holmes High School when I was 16 years old, not at all ready for college, but so fortunate that I went to Holmes High School because I think it is Go Dogs. It's like the best school. Because I had a lot of vocational credit and I had AP credit and I had IB credit and I had all these opportunities that Holmes gave me. So I went to Gateway Community and Technical College and got a drafting degree in about six months. I worked in mechanical and architectural design. Chased my, my girlfriend, who's now my wife, down to Lexington when she went to UK. And while I was there, I was working at Altech doing design, architectural and mechanical design. Yeah. A little aerospace, a little of that.
So what did you have to do to get certification to go into the classroom?
I, I told you, I'm so lucky by the people that I've been around. The department that I worked in was really small. It was really intimate. And I went back and I got my four-year bachelor's degree. No, unfortunately, when I went to Gateway, it was not accredited, so I couldn't transfer that credit to UK. So I had to take the long way around and go through all, all four years while I was working full-time at Altech. And I luckily had that support and that flexibility by my employer. And then I went into the one-year master's program through UK as well. So.
Cheer on. Different route, yes.
I'm inspired. So glad to hear you today, Kevin, and that you're willing to talk about the art and the magic of it all. There's a school of thought out there that would defeat you and me and our thinking in that they tend to shy away from this notion of star teachers or sparkly teachers because those are teachers that are born and we really can't train them. I eschew that notion entirely. I think if we, if we create the conditions as leaders in schools and districts and commit to hiring the very best people and then ensuring that teachers have the opportunity to collaborate with folks, then we all have that magic within us, I'm going to use to quote you quite often. And I, so I don't want us to shy away from, there is important clinical preparation that has to happen. You got to have that skill set. You started saying that. We, we've got a quiver full of good, solid pedagogical strategies that we go with. But I really do believe that your message will resonate with so many people who are looking to be re-inspired in our profession and to be re-attracted to our profession. So if you do hear those kind of folks who are like, oh, don't talk about star teachers. It makes everybody else feel bad. No, that's not your message at all. It's the other, the other way around. Flip that script and, and continue to inspire people because we all have a sparkle. It may be a little dull right now, but you know, kind of polish off that sparkle and encourage young people especially. Your message, I'm sure resonated with the Commissioner's Student Advisory Council. The more we can push that message out, I think, uh, the more captivating it will be for young people who are thinking about going into the profession. So I sincerely appreciate the sparkle.
Well, I appreciate that. I would say, I'll, I'll do another anecdote because I'm a history teacher, so I do that a lot. The first two weeks of me being a teacher, again, adult teacher, I wasn't like fresh out of college. I was a little older. And so my first two weeks, I tried to be Ms. Fox. Ms. Fox, again, she was the best teacher I ever had. And it was the most abject failure I've ever felt in my whole life. Because I, I can't be Ms. Fox. Only she can be her. And it took me a really long time to learn that I could be me. Again, all credit goes to those people around me who reaffirmed that and the leadership that believed in me to do that. But that's what's kept me in this profession. Through all of the other things, that has kept me here through the really tough times.
So your plan to locate these incredible teachers allows us to find other stars out there. And as we collect them, understand what we, understand what we have as a resource and how we can leverage it. Yes.
Well, I was just going to say, I'm, I'm surprised that Lou didn't bring it up, what great district that he's in there with.
Superintendent at the time invested completely in this.
That's right. Because, because he's a, he's a perfect example. We've had many teachers of the year in Boone County. And, and that's a great thing. And it's because we look for those Kevins as he's looking for those other ones. And I have to tell the story, when I was doing my dissertation work, we had a break and then Lou, who was in our class, they came back and grabbed all the topics. It left me with the one of dispositional hiring, as she recalls.
You got to be quicker, Randy.
But that's what it goes to in, in relationship to what you're doing, which is great. Because we always talk about, it is the art and science of teaching. And not everybody can be replicated. They got to be their own person. They got to be their own self. And they got to have the passion for others. And the general frame of reference that you're making a difference because as you're doing, you were making more money than you are now. But you weren't making the difference that you want to do. And that's what goes to the heart of our teachers. But that's why we also have to pay them more. Because we got to have more Kevins in the classroom. And we've got to stop thinking, as Lou said, that there's this, there's this box of teachers. Because we all went through that Tyler, here's the straight objectives, like you're saying. That works for some, but it doesn't work for others. So I commend you on what you continue to do and thank. for others. So I commend you on what you continue to do. And thank you on behalf of when I was there, the work that you were doing when I was there, but that you continue to do in Boone and now across the state. So, and keep inspiring them because that was one of the things that I think that a lot of people, when you said, what's your, why me? Because when we were pushing for individuals like yourself to apply for the award or recommend, they would say, well, why me? That is a very good thing. Why me? And it's because you want to make a difference every day. So keep it up.
Great job.
Thank you. Yes, very quickly. I love your project. I love it. I think, I go back to what we discussed earlier about the four girls or the girls and their project, Be Kind, and the ripple effect it had. I think your project could have a significant ripple effect. And I love that about it. I also love that you are highlighting individuals who may be frustrated and feeling devalued at this point in time in their career. So thank you for doing that. And I hope that it becomes contagious. So congratulations on your choice and I wish you well. You're in store for an absolutely phenomenal year. Holly and I can both speak to that. So congratulations again.
And one last little remark on that is, I think I heard the comment of like, how are you finding your teachers? Or if you find these teachers, it gives us a pool. Your pool is so large already. Like, I'm finding, it's harder to, to pick one because I have this astronomical goal of interviewing and writing about one teacher from every school district in Kentucky in six months, which is, it's crazy, it's insane. But if anybody can do it, I think it's a teacher that can do it. So the harder part is how do you pick just one? Like, how do you just find one person? I think of Boone County and like, I couldn't even pick one for my building or for my grade level, let alone one from an entire county. So that's, that's going to be the challenge, but I'm excited to do it.
Good problem to have.
Yeah, wonderful. Yes, Dr. Todd, then we got to move on.
Yeah, it just made me think of something. We've got to protect the sparkle and not dampen it. I had a running argument with one of our big donors at the university. He said, Lee, I don't think you can teach entrepreneurship. Either you got it or you don't. And I said, we may not be able to teach it. We can certainly kill it. But not funding it, not supporting it. And so we have to watch the profession to keep the sparkle going.
If you believe every kid can learn, you got to believe every teacher can teach.
Create the conditions. Thank you. Thank you so much. This is really special and thank you. Let's kind of stay in the spirit of celebration and go now to the Kevin Brown Award for Strategic Priority Award.
We're deviating just a little bit from our schedule, but I am very happy to be able to share information about the 2023 Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award. Kevin C. Brown served at the KDE in various roles from 2004 to 2018. Most recently, Brown served as the Interim Commissioner of Education from December 2019 to September 2020. And believe me, Kevin is on my speed dial. Brown's time at the department through 2020 was marked with significant challenges that called for strategic educational leadership and clear ongoing communication that was forward-thinking, action-oriented, and aimed at advancing efforts to educate, feed, and support Kentucky's 650,000 students during a global pandemic. The priority area for this award changes from year to year based upon the desire of the board. The 2023 award seeks to recognize a school or district who, through policy and practice, makes it a priority to support the successful adoption and implementation of a portrait of a learner. A portrait of a learner is an agreed-upon set of school or district-level aspirations for what every learner will know and be able to do when they leave school. A portrait gives school leaders and teachers the framework to design instruction to feature deep and meaningful learning experiences in a way that promotes real-world competencies and job readiness. The criteria for the award includes significant contributions and/or other efforts to support the successful adoption and implementation of a portrait of a learner by co-creating with communities, a set of competencies for all learners, development of a performance assessment system, provision of deeper learning opportunities for all students and educators, and adoption of local policies to support deeper learning instruction and assessment. At this time, it is my honor to announce the winners of the 2023 Kevin C. Brown Strategic Priority Award, Hopkins County Schools. I would like to take a few minutes to share what the nominator had to say. Please come forward. About the district's Portrait of a Learner efforts. Hopkins County Schools is intentionally and strategically weaving future-ready graduate characteristics into the fabric of learning throughout all of the schools and in the community to create a seamless transition for students from preschool to college or career. The Future-Ready Graduates Initiative began with the students and their future in the, in the community in mind. Through a series of roundtable discussions, key shareholders, including board members, community members, business leaders, staff, and students, came together to set the foundational characteristics Hopkins County expects to instill in all students, P through 12th grade. The district instructional team has placed future-ready instruction and student engagement through deeper learning as a high priority by creating a walkthrough observation tool to provide the feedback teachers need to enhance instruction and highlight student success in their classrooms. Hopkins County Schools' vision for students to be future-ready is living out what Hopkins County Schools is all about. One team, one mission, one community. Congratulations to Hopkins County Schools. Joining us at the table, I have on my list, and it looks like there's more people, but Amy Smith, Superintendent of Hopkins County Schools. And I'll let Superintendent Smith introduce her guests that she has with her.
All right. So I have my Director of Secondary Instruction, Elena Lancaster, Director of Pupil Personnel, Dr. April Devine. And then I have Andy Belcher at the end. Dr. Belcher is an Assistant Superintendent. He oversees our Transportation Department and Assessment as well, and anything in between that we need him to do.
We also have online with us Kevin C. Brown.
I also want to introduce, if you all don't mind, we have Gretchen Wetzel. She is the Executive Director of our West Kentucky Educational Cooperative. And they have been a huge instrumental part of this as well with our journey and strategic planning and making this mission come to life.
Thank you. Welcome.
So it is so gratifying to us to be able to celebrate your efforts of realizing that this whole notion of the Portrait of a Learner was just kind of like, do you dare? Do you dare? And understanding that a lot of time, effort, and energy is being used documenting stuff that we care about, but not care about as much as we care about our students being future-ready. And this is, it's so incredibly rewarding to us to be able to congratulate you as you have pursued your strategic priorities. So it would be interesting to understand what, what do you consider the most stubborn of the barriers that you encountered on initiating and implementing your vision of future-ready?
Well, when we talk about Hopkins County, we always tell our staff and our community and our students and families, it is a wonderful place to be. And I am not exaggerating that by any means. Dr. Todd can attest to that as well, being from Hopkins County and born and raised there. We have such a great common goal with our community partnerships. And when we wanted to begin this process and get our focus groups together and bring them to the table, we truly were having some authentic and really great discussion about doing what's best for students. And I think that was inspirational to us to know that even though we might have different ways of going about doing that, we all had the same common goal. And so it just became a mission of ours. I will tell you, I'm surrounded by the best team ever. They have a vision. And when they come to me and say, can we do this? What do you think about this? It's just like Mr. Daley shared with you all from his journey as well. You have to trust your team and give them the, the privilege to do what they know is best and take those risks with them. And so Ms. Lancaster here had the vision about our Team Hopkins Day, she and Dr. Belcher. And through that, we made this come to life even when we kicked off our school year with our students present there. And that was really special so that they could lead the way and show all of our staff members who were there on that day in Madison North Hopkins Gym, who we truly are and that students are at the heart of every decision we make. And we want to prepare them all the way from preschool. You can't start in high school to do this. You have to start when they're little in preschool to instill all those values and characteristics and what does that really look like? And we're still in the middle of that, teaching our teachers. We've built some cohorts of deeper learning teams. So those exemplary teachers who are going into those classrooms and modeling what that looks like. Because we've got to lean on each other. Because it is hard. There's hard days. But in those hard moments, you always have to remember your why. And that was our initial theme under my superintendency and continues throughout my tenure, is when we focus on our why, you know, we can push through and always do what's best for kids.
So Kevin Brown is joining us. Thank you so much. And I hope you are affirmed by the example of the work that is recognized in the name of the, of the Kevin Brown Award. It is just, we saw Kevin as the interim commissioner act on a daily basis under intense, I mean, working through the pandemic and a commissioner search and a brand-new board. It's pretty, pretty intense. But it was, the why was very clear every single day. And it is the interest of the students, whether it's feeding them, finding them, and helping them learn. It's all our job. Kevin, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. I apologize that I could not be there in person. Dr. Polio only allows me to leave the county on weekends. So, and congratulations to Hopkins County. And I would like, KDE should rename the award, the KDE Staff Award, the board should. That was what happened during the pandemic was all about the leadership there at KDE that is still there. And I just happened to be in the seat at the time. And it was also due to the leadership around the state. I'll never forget that. The superintendent's like the one seated there today, Superintendent Smith. So that's really what the award should be named. I was in Hopkins County, I believe it was with Dr. Pruitt, when he was commissioner. And I believe the seeds were being planted that have resulted in this when I was there. Because I vividly remember some of these efforts, particularly around career and technical education when we visited. If you haven't had the opportunity, look at the video on the Hopkins County District's website. There's a 12-minute video that really summarizes what they're doing. KDE staff is always good about giving me a heads up about the recipient. I love doing some independent research and finding out what the recipients are doing. And what stood out to me on the video, when you watch it, is this is not just happening in a silo within the district. And sometimes in education, we're guilty of that. This is a completely a community effort. The mayor's included on the video. And it really, I think, is a perfect example of this type of work. So I encourage everybody to, to take a look at that.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Todd, this is your native territory that we're celebrating.
Thank you. I have to take a moment of personal privilege and pride and say that Superintendent Smith's father and I began selling papers together when we were probably in the sixth grade. And we camped out many nights behind the home where you presently live, before your home was there. And I don't think on me, on the nights I expected his daughter to be Superintendent of Hopkins County, but congratulations.
Thank you.
And I have to also say that she did a very difficult thing during this period of time. We closed the school in Arlington, where her father and I went to school. And it wasn't easy for her. She still lives in Arlington. And the night that they had a kind of a celebration, the people of Arlington decided to just celebrate the moment rather than, than ignore it. She came to that banquet and spoke that night. And she could have easily stayed out of it because some of the issues that she had to deal with. That was one of the strongest things I've ever seen a superintendent do.
Sounds like a strong community that we celebrate. We do have an award.
While they're setting that up, Dr. Todd, Dr. Glass, and I had a chance to go to Hopkins County after the tornadoes. And you talk about traveling with a rock star. When you get to Hopkins County and you're hanging out with Lee Todd, we had all access to Hopkins County.
It's for you.
Thank you.
Incredible team.
That's right. Thank you so much.
Photo ops.
Yes, photo op. Yes.
Joe, you tell us where to stand.
Set up right here, actually.
Chair Robinson, would you like to join us?
She's getting the camera.
I think you'll probably sit right next to me and you can take some of this.
Go in there, jump in here.
Yeah.
Have you guys shift over a little bit more?
Hey, Joe, can we get Dr. Todd in there for a money shot?
Yeah.
That's it. Do you want to come in now?
These are your people.
As good a time as ever.
These are your people.
Thank you so much. That was really, ooh, warmed my heart. It's fun. Now we have further fun. We're going to address the issue of the biennial budget and legislative update. So.
Sharon's had a fun.
It is fun. Well, you like it. That's what you worked with for years. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We are going to, we have Associate Commissioner Matt Ross, Division Director Karen Worth, and KDE Director of Government Relations, who's afraid to come to the table.
We really, we really got to talk about the order of this agenda because it's not even fair. I'm, I'm just grateful that Brian's got plenty of sparkle, so.
Because we don't bring the sparkle.
We don't have the sparkle. So I'm going to let Karen run through the budget. But what we've tried to do here is to sort of show you what the governor proposed and then what is the current House version of the budget. So the House budget's been amended by a, by a House committee substitute. So, and then that has passed. So really what the governor's budget, sort of, what the governor laid out in his budget is probably more for discussion and negotiation at this point. There's, it's not going to happen. It's more of what version the House and Senate will come to an agreement on. So the, we still don't know what the Senate's version is going to look like. So we're just trying to give you sort of an update to right now. So I'll let Karen take it away.
Thank you, Matt. And Dr. Robinson, thank you for mentioning that. Everything
Thank you, Matt. And Dr. Robinson, thank you for mentioning that everything comes back to funding earlier. That was, I knew that was just for me. I appreciate that. Okay, let's get started on the governor's budget. Um, he, he, um, had his budget filed as House Bill 114. That was done, um, on January the 3rd. Uh, some of the things that his budget included was to increase the per pupil amount in the SEEK appropriation from 4,200 to 4,368 each year. He also included $545 million in the SEEK appropriation for school district employee increases. Uh, he fully funded people transportation. Uh, he gave CATS a $9 million bump. That wasn't our full ask, but it was an increase to CATS. Uh, there was social emotional learning, uh, funding that was added to our budget, an increase to Reed to succeed. Uh, universal preschool for all four-year-olds, um, professional development and instructional resources. Uh, on the state employee, uh, side of the, of the budget bill for, uh, the governor, he, um, included an executive branch compression increase. Uh, this language would be, um, if implemented, it would have been based on the months of service that the employee worked. Um, and it was for employees that made less than $100,000 annually. Uh, for a salary increment for state employees, the governor included 6% for fiscal year '25 and, uh, 4% for fiscal year '26. We'll move on to, uh, what Matt was sharing with you all. Um, the House did pass their, uh, budget out, um, House Bill 6. It does have a House committee sub, uh, and these numbers on this chart here is a comparison between the House committee sub and what we currently receive. And this, uh, chart is specifically on SEEK. Uh, there's a fiscal year '24, that's this year, uh, 4,200 for per pupil. Um, and then the next two columns are what the House Committee Sub included, uh, for, uh, '25 and '26. Uh, you'll notice that there is an increase, um, from the 4,200 in each year in the per pupil amount. Um, it's about a 4% increase in '25 and then bumps up from the 4,200 to about a 6% increase in '26. Also, the second year of the biennium, which is fiscal year '26, uh, the House Committee Sub does fully fund transportation, so. Also in the House Committee Sub, there is language that says any excess SEEK would lapse to the general fund. Um, it does include our full-day kindergarten language, uh, which we were very happy to see. Um, again, full, fully funding transportation in fiscal year '26. And then there's some new language in, um, the House Committee Sub that's called the Legislative Policy Requirement Language. Uh, basically this language would require school districts to prominently display on their, uh, Board of Education website proficient and distinguished reading and math scores by school. Um, it would then also require that KDE post that same information in rank order, um, on our website. Uh, the, uh, language also includes encouraging local school districts to provide certified and classified staff a salary or compensation increase. Um, and it does say that failure to implement these reporting requirements or to make adequate progress in recruitment and retention of staff could lead to the closure of schools or the takeover or consolidation of local boards of education. Uh, back to August, after much discussion and thought, uh, we prioritized, um, our additional budget request. You'll see these on the screen here. Um, you will see that in columns, uh, two and three, those are the numbers we requested. And then the out columns are what is included in the, uh, House Committee Sub. Six of our 18 requests received some or full funding. Um, as you can see there, per pupil, which we've talked about, transportation. Uh, we did receive in House Committee Sub, if it, if it continues, uh, 1.2 million for content standards, uh, junior ROTC funding, uh, assessment, uh, increased cost, uh, for assessment testing, um, operational cost and support for the education finance application, or we like to call the SEEK rebuild. Um, and then the $5 million we estimated for the, the educator employment liability insurance. That was a result of Senate Bill 3, I believe. Yes, Senate Bill 3, 2022.
Yeah.
Also, um, in KD's budget is the BOSS appropriation, uh, which we refer to, or, I'm sorry, it's the Bureau of Support Services. We refer to that as BOSS or the operating side of the House. Uh, language included, uh, in the BOSS appropriation is $500,000 for our KFIX, which is our facilities classification inventory system. Um, advanced placement, uh, the, the committee sub includes a million dollars for AP exam cost. Um, we also, um, included, as I, I just mentioned, the $5 million for the liability insurance and the SEEK, uh, uh, application. And then there was some additional language that was put in the BOSS appropriation. The first being what was called employee reporting. Uh, this would require the Department of Ed by August 1st of every year to report to the Interim Joint Committee on Appropriations of Revenue, a list of all employees, um, the office they are assigned to, their annual compensation, the fund source that pays them, and their position and title. Also included in BOSS is a certified and classified staff compensation increase report. That would be due to the same committee by September 1 of each year. Um, and that would be a detailed report of staff compensation increases done by district. Uh, the last appropriation within the KD budget is what we call LARS, or the Learning and Results Services, uh, appropriation. Uh, you'll notice many of these lines on this chart, these are what we call the LARS lines or the LARS alphabet. Uh, these have, most of these have been historically in our budget for many bienniums. Um, there was, um, some increases, uh, or, I'm sorry, no, uh, some new things that were added that we've already talked about. Junior ROTC, standards revision, and then, um, there's some funding for school resource officers, which we'll, we'll touch on here in just a moment. Um, again, just to summarize, LARS, increased assessment costs were included, standards work, junior ROTC. And then there was 16.5 million in fiscal year '25 and 18 million in fiscal year '26 for school resource officers. These funds would flow to the Kentucky Center for School Safety. They would, uh, work with districts to compensate them up, or, I'm sorry, to reimburse them up to $20,000 per campus that has a full-time onsite certified SRO. So this is completely new language for us in our budget. The House Committee Sub also included language that, um, said that additional funds have been made available to you through SEEK resources and that it's the 2024 General Assembly encourages school districts, uh, to provide a certified and classified staff increase. Uh, there was also a 4% increase in fiscal year '25 for state employees and a 2% in fiscal year '26. Just to highlight some other education funding throughout the House Committee Sub, SFCC did have language, as they typically do, for offers of assistance of 85 million. And then special offers of assistance that would, um, affect, uh, five districts, uh, was, I believe, 26.4 million. In the Health and Family Services Cabinet, where our friskies is located, uh, 3.95 million was, um, included in the House Committee Sub. And that would be for, um, additional centers that currently serve more than one school. And then the Auditor of Public Accounts, the APA's office, uh, their budget includes $750,000 to do a special audit of Jefferson County Public Schools. A year ago, we, uh, were having our February 2023 meeting. We were talking about capital projects. So again, that's our state-operated facilities, KSB, KSD, and our FFA Leadership Training Center. I'm happy to say that we've had a really good, uh, run with capital projects being funded by the General Assembly. And we're so appreciative of that because we've, we've really made some great strides on our campuses. Um, I'm happy to say that the, um, requests that we, we included in our submission, all the projects have been funded in the House Committee Sub. So we're really, really hopeful that that continues to carry forward, uh, through the process. Uh, as Brian, uh, Brian's going to share with you, we are not anywhere near halfway through this. I think the 13th of this month is officially halfway through. Uh, so a lot of changes still to come, I'm sure, but we will work to keep you all updated. And I appreciate any questions that you guys may have along the way. We're happy to answer. So, thank you.
Before I start, are there any question, budget questions? Did you want to do those now?
Um, yeah. Any questions or do you just, should we continue with the good news?
I do have one. Uh, maybe a little weedy, but on the capital projects for KSB, KSD and the FFA Center, are, are those expected to be handled within the biennium or are they escrowed? Or, um, we can't do that many projects at one time? So I can't remember how that works.
Yeah, though, it depends on the fund source. Um, some of these are investment income. Of course, they would like for us to, to expend them completely in the biennium, but we move them from, uh, from, uh, the appropriation into a project. And we do have a little bit longer to work on those projects. We're still working on 2020, 2022 projects. So a lot of the things take, especially with the supply and demand issues that we've been facing the last few years. Thank you. You're welcome. Thanks.
There may be one other thing to draw attention to, and that is the, uh, we noticed that, we noted that AP funding was at 1 million.
Yeah, right.
So that represents sort of a reduction, um, from previous years.
It was pre, this fiscal year, we have 3.6, so it was reduced down to a million.
So that.
Question now for that was, uh, what?
There is, I, I'm not sure, Dr. Todd. I know that the, the, the language actually was kind of in two pieces. Um, we'd been receiving the 1 million and that was specifically for free and reduced lunch students to pay for exam cost. Um, then, um, I believe it was last biennium, they added the 2.6 in. And that was, the language around it was just first come, first served. Um, I checked with staff and we were able to pay an additional, I think, 42, 41,000 exams with that extra 2.6 million. So that's a big hit to us and to our, to our school districts.
And do you have a sense, I, I, we never see the, kind of the funding side, but you mentioned it, Karen, um, how much of this represents use of rainy day funds, existing funds in the coffers versus, uh, bonding?
Uh, for, for the capital?
No, actually for the whole budget.
So the, the cap, uh, I would say the general fund would be for all, um, of the projects that you see here. Then your capital projects, typically our maintenance pool is, is investment income. And then our other projects that are more long-term are bonded.
Yeah, and if the question is about how do we know how much of this came from the rainy day, if it's a rainy day or not, agencies really don't know.
Okay.
How that is divided.
Can't see behind that.
Yeah.
That would be an interesting peek, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
I guess.
Sparkle, Brian.
Brian, you want to add to the conversation?
We'll get back to the, uh, General Assembly. Um, so as Karen mentioned, we're just over a third of the way through the 24 regular sessions. So this is a budget session, so obviously, uh, 60-day session. They'll go through April 15th. Uh, we likely won't see a Senate budget. Um, I would say maybe end of the month, early next month, uh, we'll, we'll finally get that Senate budget out and then, uh, we'll go from there. Um, in terms of the schedule, um, signed eye is a little weird this year in that the last two days of the session are a Friday and a Monday. Um, so it's kind of, uh, just an odd quirk of the calendar. Um, if you haven't been following committees, they've been going pretty slowly. Um, as an example, House Education this week had five items, three bills, two resolutions. And that was maybe the biggest agenda of any committee yet, uh, which is a little unusual. Uh, by now, we would expect them to be, uh, a little fuller than that. But I would encourage you, if you have a chance to follow along, especially with the education and appropriation and revenue committees when they meet, um, you can follow those usually online at KET. Uh, occasionally, uh, when things are crowded, the agenda's crowded, uh, they'll bump some over to the LRC YouTube channel. Uh, but I definitely encourage you all as board members to watch those, um, and just kind of stay tuned. Um, all right, so let's get on to bills of interest. So we have about a month to go before, end of the month is the filing deadline for new bills to be introduced. Once that happens, we'll pretty much know, uh, what bills we're looking at for this session. We can have amendment, committee substitutes or floor amendments that introduce essentially all new language at times. Uh, but that's fairly rare. Uh, so, end of the month, we'll see. Right now, we're looking at about 600 bills already, uh, between the two chambers. Uh, so a lot of bills are on this list. I'm not going to go through all of them. This is not even all the bills we're tracking, but I wanted to give you a sense, um, of kind of some of the topics that are being considered. Uh, you'll see a lot of familiar issues from the past couple of sessions. Uh, you'll see a lot of bills that deal with similar issues. And I think in those cases, we're likely to, or potentially likely to see a, you know, one bill move forward. Um, probably not all of them around the same topic. Um, so with that said, we'll just highlight some of these. So Senate Bill 8, I'm sure you're all aware of. This would change how the board is comprised, um, or developed. Uh, so right now, it's, uh, members are appointed by the governor. Those members then have to be confirmed by the Senate. Uh, Senate Bill 8 would change it to a partisan elections. So two members selected or elected from each state senate district or each state Supreme Court district, sorry. Um, so 14 members total, all elected, um, and on a semi-rotating basis, I think essentially 50% of the time. Uh, so obviously a very big change. Um, I was glancing at my watch because this bill was scheduled to be heard at noon um, in the Senate Committee, so we'll see how that goes.
It has, it has been.
It was, okay. So that was a late development yesterday. Uh, so we will continue to stay in touch with the sponsor. Uh, the chair and vice chair are going to meet with him, or scheduled to meet with him next week, uh, to, to kind of continue communications uh, about this. Uh, we have proposed some different ideas around, um, the continued stabilization of the board. As you all know, the General Assembly has worked, uh, pretty diligently the, over the past few years to make some changes that have, uh, stabilized the board and brought, um, kind of a diversity to the board in terms of, uh, sex, gender, race, political affiliation. Um, and so I think the board is generally supportive of those changes. Um, and so we are also talking about some options for them to consider that would continue kind of down that path as opposed to going the other direction. Um, I will mention just for your all's information, um, the proposed, the proposed changes in SB 8 aren't unique to Kentucky. There are about 10 or 11 states that currently have a fully elected board. There's another handful that have what I've been calling kind of a hybrid model, where they have some members that are appointed, some members that are elected. Um, and then obviously you have boards like our current board, which is fully appointed, some confirmed by Senate, state senate, some not. Um, so just to give you kind of a, a lay of the land there. Um, so let's jump down to Senate Bill 18. Uh, this bill got out of committee this week. Uh, it would change the way that school bus specifications are set by the department. Um, it would really limit the department to not going any further than what the federal motor vehicle safety standards are. Um, so I just wanted to put that one on the radar as it is moving. Uh, Senate Bill 52, I don't know that it will go anywhere this session, but I think it's a precursor to what the conversation will be in the coming months, um, and really in the coming years as we see artificial intelligence becoming more prominent, um, and how that will fit into the education, uh, realm and how it will be used in education in various ways. Um, and so I think that Senator Thomas in introducing this bill was really sort of, um, bringing that issue even more to the forefront. Uh, but I, I think it's more likely that we'll see that conversation continue in, into the interim. Um, and then, you know, some thoughtful deliberation on just all the various ways that this is going to impact, uh, education. Uh, so it's an exciting time in one way, but a very big topic. Um, so next slide, please. All right, so we'll hit a few more, uh, Senate bills. Uh, as I'm sure you're all aware, uh, there's been some transportation issues in some districts this year. Um, and so we have seen some legislation introduced in each chamber that, um, not address it specifically for one district, but would make changes to transportation of students, um, available to districts. So, um, one of those is trans, one of those ideas being discussed is the transportation of students via passenger vehicles. Um, obviously, school buses are the safest form of school transfer, student transportation. Um, so we will continue to engage in, uh, conversations with various members about this. Um, and on that note, I just want to, I, I should have said at the beginning, um, one of the things that's been great about this session so far is the involvement of members with the department. Um, so we've had a lot more legislative contact this session than we've had the past two that I've been here. Um, so we have a lot more members reaching out to ask for our input, um, our feedback. Um, and so that's been very helpful from our point of view. Uh, and so we'll see how much those, uh, comments get considered as with the process moves forward. But very excited that we are being asked to provide, uh, input on various pieces of legislation. Um, so another issue that I'm sure you all have been following along with are some issues in local districts, uh, that you've heard about today. Um, and so we saw a slate of bills introduced at the end of last week by one sponsor in the Senate. Um, and you'll see 169, 170 and 171 are all sort of related to these, these issues that have been going on. Um, so these bills just, as I said, just got introduced on Friday, uh, so they're fairly new bills. We haven't really talked about them a lot, but I wanted to put them on the radar, uh, because I do think, they've been assigned to committee. Um, they got assigned yesterday to committee, and I think that these are going to obviously be a big topic of conversation over the next few months. Uh, so we will, you know, start to review those bills and keep you apprised of them. Next slide.
Board members, at the top of your portal, um, where I put the agenda, there's a copy of the master's slide deck and Brian's slides are available there. the master's slide deck, and Brian's slides are available there. And all of them look just his presentation to that item after.
Okay.
Sorry, Brian.
Oh, no, you're fine. Okay, so that's the, the really high level of what's happening over in the Senate. Over in the House, obviously, we have a lot more members, 100 versus 38, so we have a lot more House bills. Again, you can kind of get a feel for some of the topics, essentially the same, a lot of repeats from the past few sessions, but we'll hit a couple of high bills of interest. So, school funding, obviously a big topic of conversation. We saw House Bill 2 get introduced as one of the high priority bills in the Senate, or in the House, so just as a reminder, the lower the number, generally the higher the priority it is for that chamber, that session. So House Bill 2 would put a constitutional amendment on the ballot related to school funding. This proposal's a little broader, and not quite as prescriptive as the other proposal, or the other amendment that's been filed so far. Obviously, being House Bill 2, I would assume that this is the one that will move forward. So House Bill 108, I just wanted to mention, because this is an interesting conversation that we're having around accountability as it relates to English language learners. And so we had a, we had a sponsor who has a school in his district with a high percentage of English language learners, and so he's wanting to have some conversations about some things other school districts in other states are doing as it relates to accountability with that particular student population. So, just an interesting thread that's happening, and just wanted to highlight, not sure where that's going to go at this point, but there may be more on that coming at some point. Next slide, please. So House Bill 162 is one that the department has been involved with. Chief Academic Officer Ray has been working with the sponsor on this one. We just met again on Friday. So obviously, we got the early literacy bill done last session, so Read to Succeed. This is trying to do something similar with numeracy. And so, there was an early draft put out. Mickey testified a few weeks ago in committee on it, it was just for discussion only. One thing that we've heard from districts is, even though initially, the initial bill sort of targeted for grades four to eight in order to not overlap with Read to Succeed grades, thinking that that would make implementation a little easier on districts and teachers, the feedback from the district is, no, we really want it to be K8, we want it to be K8. And so, that's one of the changes that we'll likely see coming as the sponsor continues to push this. It's obviously a, a big topic of interest for everybody, as we want to see math scores improve, and so hopefully, we'll see this one move forward this session. If not, I'm hopeful that it gets out of the House, I mean, gets over to the Senate, so that that conversation can really continue through the interim, and we can make another really strong push next year to get it across the finish line. So House Bill 208 was the first constitutional amendment related to school funding that we saw filed. I don't think that one's likely to move forward now that House Bill 2 is out there. Obviously, they could eventually roll some of what's in 208 into House Bill 2, so we'll just continue to watch that one. House Bill 225 is a cleanup bill that Representative Rawlings has filed. It does contain some of the items that OFO put forward for cleanup. These are things like outdated reports that no longer need to be, that we no longer need to have districts filing, so really just some things that will make life easier in the districts and clean up some things. So, I was excited to see that get filed. Hopefully, it will get a hearing at some point down the road. All right, so House Bill 275 is teacher misconduct. It's related, it's from last year, so it got out of the House, over in the Senate. Hopefully, we'll see it move forward. Related to that is House Bill 300, and that is trying to essentially speed up the process when a complaint gets filed with EPSB. And then House Bill 304 is the kind of follow-up to Senate Bill 150 from last session. As it relates to us, what we are asking for in 304 is some language around dual credit courses, to make sure that those are not inadvertently impacted by the language that was in 150, so. And then, I'll just, I guess I'll wrap up with House Bill 377 on the, that's the, that bill has some language that's related to the House budget proposal. So within the House budget proposal, they funded a teacher loan forgiveness program. It's up to $50,000 over 10 years, I believe. They also funded a, a student teaching stipend, $5,000 for the semester. Both of those programs were housed within KIA. And then the last slide is just a couple of resolutions. In addition to the SEEK resolution, there's a couple of other task forces there that might involve the department. And with that, I'll see if there are any questions. Another speedy legislative update.
Sher Robinson, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Please. I keep hearing rumblings that, is there a literacy bill that moved the literacy from K3 to K12 this year, or is that part of the original bill, or what is that? It's not? Because I thought that's what, there was talk on that, but I guess it didn't move through?
Session's not over.
I know that.
It could be coming.
No drafts. Okay, thank you. Because that's why, I guess, I heard, you know, most superintendents wanted to have a pushback on the numeracy bill for next year, because they were having to expand literacy, but that's not necessarily the case right now. So that's a false narrative that's out there. Okay.
Questions, comments? Well, we are in the middle of a very interesting session, and our work's cut out for us, so.
It is fast and furious.
Yeah.
One, one House resolution, I don't think made the list, but, or was it a Senate resolution? There's a resolution for a Declaration of Public School Recognition Week that will be on the House floor, Senate floor, Senate floor. Senator DeNine.
Yes.
Has filed it. It would be February 26th through March 1st. So we're trying to think about some things that we could do over at the Capitol Annex in celebration of Public Schools Recognition Week. So, didn't make the list, hasn't been introduced, but we're going to really try to push that, to try to continue the good news and good stories of things happening in public schools.
Yeah, my apologies on that one. Sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Colleagues on the board, I think this is really a time to keep our ear to the ground. Please stay tuned in for updates from our, from the KDE staff. Commissioner Kenny has initiated a number of ways to communicate with members of the General Assembly on a weekly basis, to help try to engage them with some of the, some of the stuff that is really going on, some of the excellent examples of care to the students of the, of the Commonwealth, and to show ourselves to be very open to supporting their interests, supporting their, facilitating answers to their questions, and being of service to them while they're in session. So, but it is a ongoing process, so please stay tuned over the next month.
And please don't hesitate, if you have individual questions about an individual bill, or the position the department is taking, please don't hesitate to reach out to myself or Meredith, and we'll be happy to get you plugged in to people that know the right answer.
And note, as a board, we won't be commenting on everything, but we will be commenting on some things as a department in that, in the, pursuing the responsibilities of that role. There will be comments that you will want to be aware of. So, we're trying to improve the communication and with, with you, with all of us in that regard, and have you be aware that this might be different from the routine update that we get. So, just be on alert. Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am. We have, now we get to. Now we really get to enjoy, sparkle. There you go. We'll get the experience of sparkle. This is CTE, time to celebrate, please.
Thank you so much. We are so glad to be here this afternoon to provide you our State of the Union address for career and technical education. But we have students downstairs with displays and presentations, and so we want you to be able to get down there. They are to break down at 1 o'clock, so we are going to speak very quickly through this. So if you can listen quickly, we will speak quickly.
Okay.
So, we have so many great things going on across the state, and we are, we are so excited about this. And February, obviously, is Career and Technical Education Month, and so we are celebrating with the entire country, and so proud of what CTE does to, not only to help our students, but really to help our workforce as well. All right, so over the past several years, we've worked really hard to distance ourselves from the word vocational. And so while that word still lingers, we are so glad that the old platform is behind us. And as you can see from this picture, I really like this, because this model, the old model, offered a very limited and defined occupational skill set focused on preconceived expectations. And it was actually characterized by trade professions and included primarily factory work by men. So we've come a long way. And if you think about it, career and technical education has been around since biblical days. You know, if your father was a tent maker, you were probably going to be a tent maker. And even into, you know, the eighth, or the 19th century, you know, we were apprenticing people, but it was still very much you were following in your family's history and their profession. Today, CTE includes 16 national career clusters, and in Kentucky alone, nearly 150 state-approved career and technical education pathways. We firmly believe that the CTE awareness should, should start at the elementary level, and then you are exploring at the middle school level, and then by the time you're in high school, you should be fully immersed in those pathways. Another thing is that CTE courses, that curriculum, integrates with core academics, and so we are delivering a rigorous and relevant curriculum with a strong emphasis on the academic side of it. And in fact, we are preparing students not only for today's jobs, but for tomorrow as well. CTE students benefit from numerous early post-secondary opportunities, including dual credit, industry-valued certifications, end-of-program assessments, certificates, which actually translate into articulated credit at the post-secondary level. And all of that, we have to say, that career and technical education, it's not academics and career and tech ed, they're one in the same. We have to have the academics to help enhance and push forward the CTE, but the CTE depends heavily on the academic side of that. And we want students to enjoy rewarding careers that they're interested in, not one that they've been pushed into, and we want them to be able to have that livable wage. So Reagan?
I'm going to also emphasize, Dr. Hargis and I just made a goal back there of going from 20 minutes for our presentation to five, so thank you for bearing with us. Any interaction that you're going to have downstairs with a student is going to speak much louder volumes than anything Dr. and, Dr. Hargis and I could sit here and tell you. So, on the screen, you're seeing our new Kentuckyized version of Kentucky CTE pathways. You're, you're probably familiar with the National Pathways poster. It's been around for a long time, even when I was a student, that shows the national 16 clusters. This version shows how we organize it in Kentucky. It has each of our program areas as a header, and the pathways that are within each of the program areas underneath the header. We have a dedicated program consultant for each one of these 13 program area that is able to give technical assistance to schools down to the teacher level, and so we're happy about the technical assistance that we're able to provide. As Dr. Hargis mentioned, we have a state-approved program of studies that has over 150 state-approved pathways. That program of studies is updated on an annual basis, so we can make sure that it's, it's up to date with what Kentucky needs. We're excited that for next school year, we are adding three new pathways. We have a supply chain management pathway coming to Kentucky. We're one of the first states that's been able to address that critical need at the secondary level. We have an additive manufacturing pathway that's going to be added to the program of studies, and a data science pathway. So we know all of those are emerging career fields that will continue to be for years to come. We also allow schools not only to choose from our state-approved program of studies, but also to have local pathways that are based on their local needs. And so we have a process where they submit a local pathway that we then approve, so that we make sure that this process works. They have a tailored, customized list of pathways to choose from, but they also have autonomy to do what they need at the local level. So here's some great data that we are excited to share with you. As I was working on this presentation, as the both of us were working on this presentation, I was just thinking about how easy it was to put together, because if you just asked me to talk about the good things that are going on in CTE, you really have to kind of say, okay, that's too much, you've said enough, like, slow, slow it down, because there's so many wonderful things going on. The first piece of data is that there has been an 11% increase in enrollment in CTE over the past year. We had to triple-check this data, because I just wanted to make sure that it was accurate, but eight out of 10 students are engaged, at least taking at least one class in Kentucky high schools. Over 25,000 students graduated with at least one post-secondary credential, so that's specific to CTE students. A concentrator is a student who has taken at least two courses in a four-course pathway, and we have 54% of Kentucky students last year that were concentrators in their pathway. Of those concentrators, 98% graduated, and that's slightly higher than, than the Kentucky average graduation rate. 63,425 students participated in a career and technical student organization, and we have those organizations here today that are going to be represented downstairs as well.
Okay, so over the past few years, significant efforts have been made to secure additional funding for career and technical education. And in fact, just a few years ago, only one-third of our CTE programs in the state actually received funding. The state budget fell short of meeting the daily needs to run those programs, and fell short in helping those programs be up to par with industry standards. And in fact, only state-operated area technology centers and a few qualified local centers received funding. So if you were, if you were in a comprehensive high school, or you were in one of those unfunded local centers, you didn't have anything. And so you had to, you know, you had to purchase everything, you had to find the ways to do that, and so they were pinching pennies and fundraising in order just to provide the instruction. So there were a lot of initiatives that took place, and the culmination of that actually came together with the biennium budget of 2022. The General Assembly gave us more money, and now CTE, we are so excited to say, CTE is now sufficiently supported, and all CTE, CTE programs in the state are funded. So there's nobody left with empty hands. Everybody's got the money that they need, and we are looking forward to getting our funding proposal hopefully across the finish line in this General Assembly. And that's going to help, help us take care, to make sure that there, every student has the same access to the resources, that we're going to distribute it in a way that's going to be fair across the board. Okay, and Meredith, we're going to skip this slide and.
We're going to skip that one, too. We are not going to skip work-based learning, because work-based learning in Kentucky has, has some good stuff happening. Last school year, over 4,500 students participated in a career and technical education, co-op, internship, or registered apprenticeship. Our work-based learning participation, and also the verification that those experiences are quality experiences, is rapidly growing and improving. In the 2023 General Session, work-based learning was added as a measure of career readiness in Kentucky's accountability system. And so we are, we are now happy that a student who has participated in a co-op, or an internship, or a registered apprenticeship, that has had 300 hours of on-the-job experience now qualifies as a career readiness indicator. Kentucky is one of the very few states that has all the boxes checked on advanced CTE's checklist of what makes a work-based learning program quality. Kentucky does that by having a dedicated work-based learning regulation, by having a comprehensive work-based learning manual for use by schools, which is also incorporated by reference into our regulation. We have the inclusion of work-based learning as a measure of post-secondary readiness, and we also have a full-time work-based learning coordinator at the state level who works in our Office of Career and Technical Education. Right? Next slide, please. We're going to highlight just one component of. We're going to highlight just one component of work-based learning and show you a little bit of data there for a second. The TRAC program, that's Tech Ready Apprentices for Careers in Kentucky, first piloted in 2013. And we are starting to see very positive trend data from the students that were engaged in the initial pilot. This graph depicts the students who were in a CTE youth apprenticeship program in high school, who then transitioned to a registered apprenticeship program after graduation. These numbers might be small, but they are mighty in indicating highly, very high retention rates. The median wage data shows that these students, who are now in their early 20s, are earning more than the median wage in Kentucky. 100% of them are employed, and most importantly, they are doing this with zero college loan debt. Due to the success of the TRAC program, the KDE Office of Career and Technical Education has been named an apprenticeship ambassador by the U.S. Department of Education. We work with the Education and Labor Cabinet's Office of Employer and Apprenticeship on this initiative, and we are happy to be working with Secretary Link and, Link and his staff in order to scale this even more statewide. Finally, a little bit of data to end out with. Our last bit of data shows that our career readiness by the numbers is improving in Kentucky. The number shown for co-ops and internships is the number of students who earned the career readiness indicator last school year, not the overall enrollment, because as I previously mentioned, that number is at 4,500. Over 18,000 students earned a valid industry certification. Those are managed by the Kentucky Workforce Innovation Board, and so we know that those are valuable credentials to Kentucky employers. Over 18,000 students earned an end-of-program certificate to show that they had successfully completed the knowledge in their pathway. All of those EOP certificates are associated with articulated credit at a Kentucky post-secondary institution. And then finally, a CTE dual credit. It looks really good. We have had over 24,517 students successfully complete a CTE dual credit course.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so I wanted to highlight just for a second, this Career and Technical Student Organizations, or CTSOs as we refer to those. They are embedded in our CTE curriculum and pathways and provide communication and leadership skills that really go above and beyond. During the 2223 school year, we had over 63,000 students participate in these organizations. And so I have a request from you because, or for you, because during, starting in March, they're going to be having their state conferences, and we're always looking for judges. You don't even have to judge. If you'll just show up, you can just say hello, or you can direct traffic. So if you are interested in that or your time permits, we are happy to share some links with you so that you can sign up for one of those opportunities. Next slide. Okay, and this brings us to the end. We invite you, as you know, to come downstairs. We have students set up in, I think, rooms B and C.
A and B.
Oh, sorry, in rooms A and B, and they have a lot of presentations for you. They did this last year at the Capitol, so this is our second annual showcase, and we are so excited about it. They're very interactive, so I encourage you to, you know, as I said the other day, get your hands dirty, jump in with them, and let them, let them show you what they've learned and maybe instruct you. We also have your lunch provided by the Jessman County Culinary Arts Program, so we'd like to thank them for that, and we know that you're in for a real treat. And as a board, thank you so much for your commitment and support of career and technical education, and not just for our office or our, but for our family. And we know that the students are the most important part of that family. So thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you. Look forward to visiting with the students and that lunch as well, and thank you for your forbearance. That is the, that concludes our agenda. If there are no further issues, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Duncan.
Okay, you have a motion and a second. I sense no interest in discussion. I'll put the question. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? We stand adjourned. See you downstairs.